Go ahead and call the meeting to order, so if we can have everyone take their seats, please. So Caleb, we have somebody online, do we? Okay, thank you. I'm going to call this meeting to order at 6:01 PM. This is a regular meeting for Wednesday, August 17th, 2022. Madam Clerk, will you take the role?
I will. Tim Hale.
Here.
Stephanie Nowers.
Here.
Dee McKee.
Here.
Robert Yant.
Here.
Moki Two.
Here.
Jesse Sumner.
Here.
Ron Bernier, are you on the phone?
Here.
Thank you. You do have a call, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Is there anything the members would like to pull from the consent agenda? Yes, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I'd like to pull Resolution 22-069.
Okay, thank you. Anything else any other members would like to pull? I think she maybe, we'll give her a minute here. Good. Okay, all righty. So we just have the one item then that will be pulled. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Okay, hearing none and the agenda is proved as presented. If you all stand, please. The flag is over here. And since our attorney is back, we will ask him to lead us. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So I'm going to come down on the floor and present the proclamation that I have Nobody brought a mitt and a ball? No? A bat or anything? Let's see. Coach, would you like to introduce the team or have them say their names so everybody knows? And then I'll read the proclamation. Will you want to come up here to the mic? Would you like to introduce the team by their names or have them come up to the mic and say their name?
Maybe come up and go to themselves.
Okay, why don't you start off? And then, girls, okay, we'll just follow the coach. You see the mic there with the green light on it?
Just watch your step.
Yeah. So if you just say your name and then I'll read the proclamation.
Coach Ron Shaw.
Taylor Passard.
Free Alan Parent.
Sydney Shaw.
Olivia Del Bianco.
Avery Wally.
Olivia Batel.
Jaslyn McMullin.
Emma Minnick.
Savannah Hill.
Ali Morsy.
Jano Ingabok.
Lonnie Schmidt.
Brian Schmidt.
This is a, I'm going to stand here then so I can look at all of you, okay? It's not that you're prettier than what's out there, but that's okay. I think you are, so, okay. So this is a proclamation. Whereas the Palmer Little League Girls Softball Team is a team of girls from Palmer, Alaska, ages nine to 12, although I hear maybe there's one or two of you that are above 12. Whereas the Palmer team dominated their district competition and qualified for the 2022 Little League Softball Northwest Regional Tournament held in San Bernardino, California. Whereas this is the first time ever that a team from Palmer Little League has made it to a regional tournament. And whereas head coach Ronnie Shaw encouraged the team by reminding them that this is the same game that you've always played and in cry to draw and back block out that the fact that you're in California and it's hot outside, right? Whereas it is my great pleasure to honor all of you. Thank you. And I would be resolved and myself, the mayor, the Matsu Borough, acknowledge and celebrate the achievements of all of you, the Palmer Little League Girls Softball Team. And I've signed it and Lonnie has witnessed my signature. And thank you very much for doing what you do thanks to the coaches. I know it takes a lot of time and so just makes us proud and we're happy that you were able to do that. So how many are going to play next year and take it all away again? Are you? Huh? Do we have anybody that won't be eligible next year? You. Okay, so quite a few. And you're going to do the same thing with that team plus what, the new recruits for this team? Okay, sounds good. The next item on our agenda is a meeting minutes from several preceding minutes. A special assembly meeting from the 17th of May, a regular meeting from the 17th of May, a joint school and board and assembly meeting on the 23rd of May, an assembly special meeting on the 24th of May, an assembly special meeting on June 7th, a regular assembly meeting on June 7th also. So you can see, we were very busy during that time. Are there any corrections to the minutes as they've been presented? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Okay, the next item is agency reports and we do, and don't have anybody that's requested. So next we will have reports. Thank you, ladies, again. And let's see, do we have any reports from any of the cities? Do you see anybody from, no, it's, okay, and then we, I don't see anybody from cities, right? Okay, school district, I think we have some, we have several qualified people probably. Well, go ahead. Thank you for being here. I know you had a conflict tonight, so glad you chose us.
Yes, we did. We collectively decided to be here tonight of all places. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Manager Brown, Assembly members. My name is Katie Gardner. I'm the Associate Superintendent of Human Resources for the School District. Also here with me this evening is my colleague Reese Everett, who's the Associate Superintendent of Instruction. We also have representatives for Matsu Central School for later on in the agenda. But we do have a conflict tonight. Mr. Everett and I are here because Mr. Fulp and Dr. Trainey are at the school board meeting, which is also taking place this very minute over in, at the Central Administration Building. I wanted to give just a brief update on a couple of things, of course, because there is a lot happening in the School District right now. We just finished our second day of school. There's quite a bit to report, some of it fantastic, and then a few things we know that we can do a little bit better. I first want to say a quick thank you to the Assembly, to Manager Brown and his staff for the support at the Houston Open House last week. Not only did we have a traditional open house for students, but we also had the opportunity with the support of Borough staff to host time for the committee, a community to learn about the new facility and get some additional information on the project and also have time to look at least around the new facility. I know the community is very excited about that building and we just appreciated the support for that event. Two days in is an exciting time. Teachers are excited, students are excited. I can tell you, as the parent of three Matsu students, they are tired after two days of school and getting back into that normal schedule. But what it also means is that kids are back engaged. Fall activities are in full swing. We've had home football games and volleyball games. We've had cross-country meets and a whole host of other activities going on. It's fun to see students active and engage. We are also pleased to report that our enrollment numbers are looking strong. I know there's some additional detail that the district is planning to present at the joint meeting in September to walk through all of the finer points, but essentially we're just slightly under projection and we expect those numbers to continue to grow over the next few days and expect that we will be at projection. It's great news after a couple of years of, of some challenges with enrollment due to COVID, so we're pleased to see students in schools learning and really returning in some cases. We also, this school year, opened a new school. Kinnick Charter School opened. They are still struggling a little bit with their facility, but we're very excited about that new program. They've got about 100 students that have chose that option for this school year, which is a great start for them. We're excited to continue to work with them into the future. Unfortunately, not everything was perfect for the start of the school year and really one thing that we know is not meeting the expectations of our community has been with transportation. Unfortunately, very late in the summer, just last week, we did learn that there is a driver shortage for the Matsu and that led to basically what we're referring to as rolling bus cancellations or closures. Fortunately, I suppose from one perspective, we have some experience with this. We did have shortages last year. We've chosen to follow a very similar pattern, so families have some familiarity with how it works. Certainly not ideal. It would be our wish that we weren't working through that, but we are trying to follow a pattern that people are, are at least familiar with. If individuals need information about those places that will be affected, www.matsuk12.us/buscancellations has the full schedule of what the cancellation schedule is, which specific schools and routes are affected on which days. In addition, we had a couple of other complications with the beginning of the school year. First, of course, is that our schools on the first day were polling locations. And while we did manage that pretty well, it still presented a complication and it's something we certainly want to make sure that we're looking at into the future. We also have a new bus contractor. And with a new bus contractor, new drivers, we've had some, some hiccups along the way that we are working on, we're aware of. And essentially, the delays that have been occurring, we don't find to be acceptable. We know that. We are engaging with our community to let them know what will be happening. This will improve. It's not going to improve tomorrow, at least not to everyone's satisfaction, but we're definitely managing it. We're on it and we are going to continue to work on it until we have that bus service meeting our expectations. So I don't want to take any more time. I do want to make sure that I mention that we're, of course, here also in support and have individuals ready to speak and answer questions on the ordinance that's coming up later in the agenda. But I certainly appreciate the support of the Assembly, appreciate the first two days of school. Thank you to all of our staff and students and for the great work that they've been doing. And finally, just as a reminder, we do start our new PLC Monday schedule next week, so students will arrive to school an hour later. Staff will be engaged in professional learning communities. We also have information on that on our website, but we're excited to see how that program develops and how it impacts learning in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a report? Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. On the bus shortage, which I know Anchorage is affected by as well, do you have any sort of like, for parents who are reaching out to us or friends that we have, like any sort of timeline on when you think you might not have to have the rolling blackouts?
Through the chair, Member Nowers, thank you for that question. We are, of course, hesitant to say anything definitive on a date, but I could, can share some good news. The, the bus contractor has been sending up drivers from out of state to help support us. We do have a large number of drivers who are going through and completing training as we speak, which is a multi-week process. And we also have drivers who we know will be returning to school bus service toward the end of the tourism season. So we are hopeful and what we are looking at is that, that we'll be revisiting in about three weeks. And I don't think we'll be back to full service then, but hopefully after another possible three-week stint of rolling services, we'll be ready to go. Again, I say that very hesitancy, hesitantly, a lot can happen, but we have some good news on drivers. And we also have potentially additional drivers who may be coming up from out of state as well. So I do not believe that this is something that will continue throughout the school year and hopefully, once we get all these drivers through training, know how many of them have been cleared, we'll have a better idea on when the rolling closures may be able to stop.
Okay, is there any questions? Thank you. Do we have a report from the State of Alaska? Do we have a report from the Matsu Convention and Visitors Bureau? Lonnie, can I get you to turn the mic on? Thank you. Members of the Assembly, Mayor DeVries, Manager Brown, I'm here tonight to give you just a brief update on the activities of the Matsu Convention and Visitors Bureau. I want to thank the manager for recognition last month of receiving the Destinations International Destination Organization Leadership Award. And I'm super pleased to announce that last week, U.S. Travel Association recognized Matsu CBB as a finalist in their Destiny Awards Ceremony last week for our Integrated Marketing In-State Adventure Trails Campaign. No other Alaska CBB has been nominated for a Destiny Award. Both of these national recognitions are a huge awareness of the Matsu Borough for the commitment and excellence of the visitor economy. Our Board of Directors met very early this morning. This summer has been very busy for them in addition to workforce challenges. Anecdotally, we feel confident bed tax collections will be back to 2019 numbers. The Finance Department is still processing fourth quarter payments and we won't know total bed tax collections for the full summer until November. We do know that ADR, or average daily rate for accommodations, has increased since 2019 and that will contribute more to bed taxes, too. Our website traffic is up 19% over 2021. And last summer, we had a much bigger paid search campaign, additional funds we received from the state DCCED COVID Safe Travel Grant. Every week, we're adding new content, images, events, and adapting new keywords that have increased our organic search. Excuse me. Speaking of images, we had a perfect weather for our annual photo shoot at the end of June. We have 400 new images from all corners of the borough. Many now are on our website. But I want to take, take this time tonight to focus on highlighting the ways that we, the Matsu CBB, is a strong partner with the Borough. We were first to step up and support the bid for the Arctic Winter Games. We were active in preparing for the bid and assisted in forming the nonprofit Host Society. I have committed the volunteer time for my staff member, Casey Wrestler, to serve as the Marketing and Communications Director. He has been the lead in the web, in the new website launch, logo and brand development. I estimate he is volunteering over 12 hours of week, 12 hours a week to Arctic Winter Games. And this is in addition to all of the promotion, the work that the Matsu CBB will be providing. The Arctic Winter Games will be a feather in the Borough's cap and, and you have an amazing team in place right now. In April, I announced that we received $100,000 American Rescue Plan nonprofit recovery grant from the Alaska Community Foundation to fund a sustainable tourism master plan. McKinley Research and Huddle Alaska were selected to lead the planning effort. To ensure the plan reflected local needs and values, a leadership team was appointed to guide the plan development. Team members provided input into all aspects of the plan, including the resident online survey, four community workshops, stakeholder interviews, visioning, and strategy development. The full 50-page document can be found at alaskavisit.com/masterplan. And I'm leaving behind a four-page summary document that identifies the four goals with objectives and strategies. I'm, I'm not going to get into that this evening, but we have scheduled a presentation of the plan by McKinley Research on October 21st at Evangelos at noon. This is the plan I'm going to give to the clerk. We are encouraged, as the Borough Finance Department has mentioned recently, confident about our EDA grant to complete the Gateway Visitor Center. The Section 106 Cultural Survey of the Site has been completed and last week, we received communication that the environmental officer was moving it forward. I want to prepare you with a little background before an announcement of an award. The Matsu CBB has supported and moved this project forward for the past 12 years. It is a relocation and replacement of the old log, log cabin visitor center that lost its easy access with the construction of the Glen Parks Interchange and Divided Highway and became surrounded by developing hospital and medical district. After we completed a feasibility study in 2010, our Matsu Legislative Delegation was successful in inserting $1 million in 2014 state capital funding to purchase the property and 1.2 million in 2015 to complete the site and building design. It was shovel-ready. The Borough Assembly has passed 16 pieces of legislation since 2010 supporting this project. In addition, since 2010, the Gateway Visitor Center has been listed on either the state or federal priorities legislation each year. Last November, you passed legislation securing the 1.67 million, 20% match, most of which came from the sale of the old visitor center property that the CBB had given title to the Borough in 1988. The Matsu CBB would be responding the building out of our existing budget. A management agreement with the Borough was included in the EDA grant application. And finally, the extensive programming of the visitor center will benefit visitors and residents with presentations highlighting our trails, agritourism, cultural and heritage experience, just to name a few. If any of you have any questions regarding your support for accepting the federal EDA grant, I ask that you reach out to me or one of our 10 board members before the legislation is scheduled. We want to have the opportunity to understand any concerns you have and share our commitment to our Borough partnership. And I thank you for this opportunity to speak. Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Ready? Thank you. The next committee report is from the Joint Assembly and School Board Committee, and we have not had a meeting. Public Relations, are there any public relations reports? Any of the Assembly? Okay, Mr. Brown, do you have a manager's report?
I have no update for the Assembly tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney, do you have a report for us other than how much you enjoyed your vacation and your...
I did not. No, it was good to get away for the first time in a couple of years. I've actually taken any serious amount of leave, so thank you for letting me do that. I have no updates catching up. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, do you have a report?
All I have is the Clerk's Report in the red folder with the upcoming meeting schedule and the quasi-digital report.
Did you want to say anything about, yeah, did you want to say anything about opening for vacancies?
Oh, I can. So I just, and also so the Assembly knows, of course, we are giving out, starting to give out candidate packets today. So the filing doesn't begin until Monday, but people can pick up their packets in the Clerk's office or go online and pick those up.
Thank you. Sure. And there's no citizens or other correspondence being presented? Madam Clerk, would you read the IMs into the record, please?
IM 22165 notifying the Assembly of a land acquisition of MSB Tax Parcel 18N01E03A009 containing approximately .99 acres and Lot 1 JLT subdivision containing 1.32 acres for the Palmer Fishook Public Safety Building Station 35.
Are there any comments on the IMs? Okay, hearing and hearing on the IM is presented. We do not have any persons to be heard, so the next item then is a public hearing. And Madam Clerk, whenever you're ready.
Ordinance 22089, an ordinance providing for the real property tax relief in the amount of $1 mil against the fiscal year 2023 area-wide real property tax levy in accepting and appropriating $11,948,300 from the Alaska State Department reimbursement to fund the relief. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star three.
Do you want, when you acknowledge it?
I don't know what it is, Madam Mayor.
It's an amber alert.
Okay.
Oh, everybody's phones were going off? Okay.
Okay.
Got it. Okay. Do we have a staff report on this ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
So, this ordinance before you is sponsored by Assembly Member Sumner. It was drafted through the Borough Attorney's Office. And so, as explained in the IM, because of the timing between the state and the local budget process, the Borough Assembly adopted the budget. We're mandated by state law to adopt a budget and mail tax bills by July 1st of every year. So, because of that, we typically adopt the budget in late May, sometimes it goes into early June, but Finance Department, of course, needs a few weeks to finalize the numbers, get the bills printed, mailed. They have to go out by July 1st by statute. So, the Borough Assembly adopted the annual budget and the annual mil rates before the state budget was completed, and our budget, the borough's adopted budget, levied an area-wide mil rate of 8.901 mils. After our budget was adopted, when the state passed its budget, of course, the governor has time to levy, to issue vetoes, and so the state's budget isn't finalized until after that timeframe. So, near the end of June, it was apparent that the governor didn't issue vetoes that affected one of the line items in the state budget, which was backpaying the borough for school bond debt reimbursement. So, for the past several years, the state did not fully fund its commitment to pay for 70% of school bonds, roughly 70%. Some bonds might have different rates. So, this year, what the state did was, in their budget appropriation, handed the borough approximately 30, I'm looking at shy, $38 million, give or take, to pay back for the past few years when they didn't give us that much money. Of course, the borough had to find ways to pay that money, and one of the ways we did that was through taxation and using that money to pay the bonds rather than other things. So, Assembly Member Sumner's proposal here will take approximately $12 million of that money and allocate it as a credit to everyone's tax bill. Because the tax bills have already been issued and because they have to be issued by July 1, you cannot amend the tax bills, but what you can do administratively is issue everyone a credit who has a balance outstanding. So, as described in the ordinance and further in the IM, the nothing in this ordinance is intended to give an actual payment out to people, so it's not going to put money in anybody's pocket if they don't owe taxes. What it's going to do is, if you owe taxes, it will lower the tax bill. Taxes are, first payment was already due, I believe it was Monday was the day it was due, so, and then the second half payment is due in February. So, for anybody who's already made their first half payment, the credit will get applied completely to the second half payment and lower it. The ordinance also contains language that grants the manager, probably through the Finance Director, broad discretion to implement the program as long as it's fair and equitable across the board, because it's kind of unknown, you know, how people might come forward and say, hey, I need a revised tax bill, or I'd like to see what the numbers are, things like that. So, it gives the manager a great deal of flexibility to actually implement any administrative processes he needs to do this, and the intent is to give everyone a 1-mil tax credit, which will make the effective tax mil rate 7.901 mils on the area-wide fund.
Thank you. So, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Those that are wishing to testify, this, your testimony shall only be for ordinance 22-089, okay? So, do we have a sign-up sheet?
I'm waiting on staff.
Oh, okay. We do have a sign-up sheet, and even though we do have a sign-up sheet, we will take those first, Mike, and then we will open it up to anybody, and thank you, sir. So, opening the public hearing, and Mike Alexander, Mike?
You guys have jacked my taxes by 230% the last four years. That's what I'm paying now. We paid in full yesterday on our first payment, so I guess I'm getting the shaft again. So, that's why I wanted to know, what are you doing with all that money? I know property values have went up, but I haven't seen anything. My roads still have potholes in them, they look like hell. And I want to know, from 2018 until this year, my taxes are up exactly 230%, way beyond the, even if I got the senior discount, it's still up there. And obviously, the one we voted in didn't take effect this year either. So, this is a nice thing, but it's a little bit too late, Jesse, I think, you know, not much for anybody that's really getting any relief. We're not getting taxes back, and 1 mil, it should be more like 2. So, that's where I'm standing with it. And I guess, like I said, we're just out of luck because we paid our bill in full, so thank you.
Thank you. So, Mike, now, do you want to, so now, since we only had one person sign up, now it'll be open for anyone else that would like to come forth, Mike?
Yeah, Mike Coons, Lazy Mountain. I just paid mine, my first six months. It was, I went from $300 to $600, which I was like, wow. So, I guess the big question is, since I owe another $600, what, you know, I'd like to kind of get an idea of what, am I going to have to worry about that $600 this time? And then, to what Mike was talking about, for those that already have paid it this first of the year lump sum one time, do they get reimbursed on that at all, or is that credited to next year? Or something has got to be done, because it's kind of like Let's Go Brandon when he wants to say, well, we're going to have the school relief, you know, the school debt reimbursement, school debt, you know, we're going to wipe out the school debt for $10,000 or $20,000 or whatever. And yet, all you get, all these people that went to college and already paid their school debt, but they got the shaft. So, I don't want to see anybody getting the shaft, and I like the idea. I mean, I'm not, personally, I'm going to take that, I'll take that credit any day of the week, you know, I'm on a fixed income, too. But I think the people that have already paid it need to have some way of getting, you know, maybe being transferred over to next year so they can get that, see that, see that relief as well. Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to testify? Yes, come forth, sir.
I'm Brian Endel, your true conservative candidate for Matsui Borough Assembly District 1. Thank you for hearing me, Madam Mayor, Mr. Manager, members of the Assembly and staff. I'm in favor of this ordinance, and I'd like to see it passed. I think it'll do a lot of good for people in the borough. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to, yes, sir, come forth, please?
My name's Keith Bowlen. Not the main issue I came to talk about tonight, but this one's pretty big, too. Basically, what they've done with taxes, our country made it legal for companies to do years ago, but for some reason, it's okay for legislative bodies and committees and politicians to do the same thing that we've made it illegal for companies to do. We just keep raising the tax rates, and then they offer a rebate, and then the private sector takes up and eats up that rebate, and then we just tell everybody, well, you're S.O.L., sorry, sorry you didn't, sorry you paid early, sorry you were a responsible citizen. I mean, we made it illegal for companies to do this kind of stuff years ago, but we still allow our government to do it, and I just find that frankly ridiculous.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to testify? Okay, I'd just like to say that people that are standing in the back, the seats up front were where the girls' softball team was, and so they are open now since the team is gone, so they're not like reserved or anything. So, you're thinking, why are there all those open seats up there? So, you're welcome to be comfortable wherever you would like to be, but they, these seats up here in front are available, so. Anyone else that would like to testify on ordinance 22-089? Okay, Caleb, do we have anybody online? No, okay. So, one last time for testimony before I close the public hearing on ordinance 22-089. Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing, and Deputy Mayor?
I move to adopt ordinance 22-089, and then I wish to speak to it. So, I think that some folks maybe misinterpreted what the attorney said. Just because you've already paid your taxes for the year does not mean that you will not receive the credit. You will still receive the credit against your property tax, but it will be applied for the second half of the year or for next year or the next time you're paying property tax. It would, I don't think it would be legal for us to only give the credit to people that hadn't paid yet. We'd have to get, we have to give equal treatment across the board for all taxpayers. So, and the reason that we are doing this as a rebate rather than having lowered the mil rate is because we received a sum of money from the legislature after our budget was already passed, after our mil rate was already set, that exceeded what we needed to spend in our budget. So, we are returning the money to the taxpayers, as I think is appropriate, and so that's simply why we're doing it. I don't really think that this is a particularly objectionable thing. I personally don't believe that the borough should excessively save taxpayer money, so I do think it's appropriate to send back this money that we do not have an immediate use for. Thank you.
Assemblyperson Yack?
Yeah, Jesse clarified one of the things that, if you've paid in full or in partial, this will still hold and move towards future. The other thing I'd like to clarify is, is this is an area-wide real property relief. It's illegal in a second-class borough to use area-wide money on roads. So, if there's potholes in your roads, I'm sorry, we all have them in our districts, you got to get with your RSA, and you got to work with them on that. So, it would not be legal for us to use this money on that. I commend Jesse for this. I don't think any government should overcollect. I don't feel like we did that this year. We adopted the lowest mil rate in 33 years. If this money had been in the coffers prior to that adoption, our mil rate would have been lower, probably by another $12 million or so. So, again, the governor still had the right to veto this prior, or when we adopted our budget, so Jesse did the right thing. He waited until the governor's vetoes illegally expired. When Mike gave us a lot of money that we weren't counting on, Jesse turned around and immediately worked on a way to give it back. So, I commend him, and I will support this in full.
Okay, Assemblyperson Hale?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just would like to thank Assemblymember Sumner for bringing this forward. This is, this is really good, this is a really good thing that we're doing here for the last several years. Our taxpayers have been shouldering the burden of a tax bond reimbursement that the state promised it would pay and did not. So, we're kind of getting some of that money back to folks that we had to take because the state was not meeting its obligations. So, now that they have, we'll get that back to you and try and, try and keep you whole.
Okay, further discussion, yes, Assemblyperson Nowers?
Yeah, I think this is a good thing. I think for, you know, the average property owner who owns a $320,000 home, this is going to be about a $300 break. I'm one of those people seeing my property value skyrocket, and I don't get the senior exemption, and so, but as a body, we have lowered the mil rate every year. So, we've actually, my taxes this year actually went down by about 20 bucks. But I understand if you're in the senior disabled category where you get an exemption on your first $264,000 of value, which is something we increased this year, the exemption you get, if your value increased over that 264, it's a big hit, right? Because you're all of a sudden being taxed on that, but hopefully, the exemption is helping to some extent, you know, on a, on a $300,000 home, I'm paying a lot more as a non-senior disabled than a senior disabled. So, hopefully, that's, that's some help. I would like to see all of the people benefit in the same year. So, I guess I have, before I make a proposal, including those people who have paid their taxes in full, because some of those people might not benefit if we pass this and then they sell their property and they don't get the rebate. So, I realize cutting a check to those people who have paid in full might be onerous, but is there a way, is there that many people who have paid in full, and is there a way for us to provide them relief in this fiscal session?
Through the mayor, too, Assemblymember Nowers. Our policy in collections is if there is more than $50 in credit on an account, we issue a check. So, if somebody has paid in full and their rebate is going to be more than $50, they will actually get a check from us.
Okay, thank you. And then, one other question, just administratively, for people who are going to make that second payment, is there any communication planned for letting them know, like, I already got my bill, so I would just, you know, set it aside, I've paid my half, and then I'm going to pay my other half in the spring? Is there any communication to let people know what the new amount would be if this does pass?
Since we're still processing tax payments for first half, until that is completed by the end of the month, we would not be able to send out anything, but once we make the calculation and apply it to their accounts, we can generate a letter letting them know what their new balances are.
Okay, that sounds great to at least try to get the word to them, so, thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, and so, just to clarify, we could have just cut every taxpayer check and mailed it, but it would have been an administrative nightmare and very expensive, so this is the cheaper, more efficient way to go about it, essentially.
Further discussion by any of the Assemblymembers? Yes. Yes, Assemblyperson Yack, go ahead, sir.
I just wanted to point out, I was in favor of the idea of cutting checks and mailing them as well, after talking with staff and realizing how there are a lot of people in our borough that actually come in and pay in person and don't have any source of receiving mail. We actually couldn't do that. We cannot send everybody in the borough, right? So, I think, given the manager and staff discretion on how to get this going, is the way to do it. I trust that Manager Brown and the Finance Department will get this done.
Further discussion?
This is Ron.
Oh, okay. Is it all ready for you?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
I'm in full favor of this, that it helps our constituents for sure, and thanks for doing a good job.
Okay, thank you. Assemblyperson Nowers?
And just one thing, I wanted to respond to the gentleman who said, you know, I'd like this to be a 2-mil rate. I would, too. Part of the reason I ran up here was for fiscal responsibility, but I think what you'll see later on the agenda is a proposal for a school that we're going to build, and perhaps we could do this without taking on debt, and if we're able to fund that school without taking on debt, or we're able to fund roads without taking on debt, that benefits everybody long-term. So, there is additional money, but I'm looking at ways that we could do it so year after year, residents who've been here are going to have lower property taxes, because if you take on debt, we're going to have a debt payment year for year. So, I'm always happy to discuss fiscal policy with people and making good decisions, and for what it's worth up here at the Assembly level, that's something that I take very seriously in terms of trying to keep mil rates low, but also do the things that we need, schools, roads, et cetera, and do things that benefit people long-term, not just one year.
Further discussion from the Assembly? Okay, is there any objection to passing the legislation? Hearing none, and the legislation passes. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance 22-090, an ordinance authorizing issuance of general obligation bonds and one or more series in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $24 million to finance the design and construction of educational capital improvement projects and related capital improvements in the borough, and submit the question of the issuance of such bonds to the qualified voters of the borough at the November 8, 2022 Borough Regular Election. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star three.
Okay, staff report?
So, one of the reasons these are both on tonight is I'm back. Before you, as an ordinance, to issue $24 million in bonds, as the clerk said, for the school facility. As you recall, during the fiscal year 2023 budget, Assemblymember Yunt made an amendment reducing the appropriation to the school district by $11.3 million, give or take, following some discussions then with the school board or school personnel. It was discovered that the school was going to be using it was discovered that the school was going to be using money that they had to advance the design for Matsu Central School. And then there was discussions among school district staff and Assemblymembers Yunt and Sumner regarding putting a ballot question on for this fall. And that is this ballot question before you. It would authorize twenty-four million dollars for the purpose of constructing a new Matsu Central facility at the site where the site selection committee has already selected for the location. However, in the past several weeks since this ordinance was written and since it was introduced, the manager apparently has been having, and along with the Assemblymembers, has been having discussions, further discussions with school staff. And then with the additional money from the state regarding the back payout of the school bond debt, just as the prior ordinance, circumstances have changed. And I'll turn it over to Manager Brown to talk further about it.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, so just, well, we'll say, when we, when we receive this money, some of this is a, a timing issue. So this ordinance was sponsored by Assemblymembers Sumner and Yunt because this is the last regular meeting that you can have a ballot initiative, make the fall ballot. So we had to kind of move forward with this while we were waiting for the governor's vetoes and all that thing, all that to play out. And since then, we have agreed, wh-what we did, we went to look for a, a way to fund the school construction with a no-debt scenario. So instead of taking on twenty-five million or twenty-four million dollars in, in bond debt and then paying, I think it's somewhere around four million dollars annually over the next twenty years. I think it's actually a little bit more and probably closer to five million. Interest rates are going up. We wanted to find a way to forward fund this. So similar to the attorney's report a moment ago, some of that school bond debt reimbursement money essentially would go back into, to some degree, helping to forward fund this. So we agreed in principle with the school district for a scenario that would allow us to forward fund this project. It still requires school board and assembly action. So what I'm going to describe is the agreement in principle, but our elected bodies still have to take formal action to make this a reality, which would allow this measure potentially, this ordinance here tonight, to, to be voted down and not be put on the ballot. The agreement essentially uses ten-point-five million dollars from the school district in funding that was originally set aside for the Houston High School rebuild following the two thousand eighteen quake. That money was set aside by school, by the district so we can move forward with the construction contract while we were still working with the Federal Emergency Management Agency to get federal funding to fully fund that school. Well, we were able to do that. So that's where this ten-point-five million dollars came from originally. We would couple that with some one-time funding from the school district of three million dollars. Again, that, that also came out of the recent approved budget from the state legislature. We would also, the, the borough would kick in three-point-four million dollars out of a school bond debt reserve. And the district would pay that back over the next five years once the facility is occupied, using the existing lease payments that they're paying for their current school. So that would allow us to, to recoup that three-point-four million. And then the borough would contribute five-point-eight million dollars out of the school money or the school bond debt reimbursement money that we just received from the state of Alaska. So that would get us to twenty-two-point-seven million dollars, which would fund a construction contract based on current cost estimates. So that's the agreement in principle that we have with the district. I believe that district administration is communicating that publicly tonight to the school board because our meetings are occurring concurrently this week. And that, again, both bodies would have to take formal action to make this a reality. But we think we would generally have agreement on moving forward with this. And what this would do is allow us to get this school, get a permanent facility for the largest school in the district, which is a correspondence program. I think the principal mentioned the other day, they have somewhere around twenty-three hundred students enrolled in this program. It would get them out of a leasing arrangement where we're paying nearly six-hundred-thousand-dollar, well, we, I say we, the school district, still taxpayer money, six-hundred-thousand dollars a year in lease payments. So this would allow us to get it into a permanent facility, not take on the twenty-four million dollars in debt, build the school, and then move forward. So that's the agreement in principle for the public and for the body to consider as you take testimony on this ordinance.
Any question? Yes, Assemblyperson Yott?
Thank you, Manager Brown, for a, a good update there. So as mentioned, Jesse and I will be asking the body to vote this down this evening. But I'd like to speak a little bit more on the, as to how we got here. So during budget season, you're right, I'm sorry.
So, okay, so I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing for ordinance twenty-two dash zero nine zero. And so if anybody wants to testify, I do have a sign-up sheet and we will be asking those people to come and testify first and then we'll open it up to the general public. So Jolie Martin? It's on because it's green. Mm-hmm, green is go.
Good evening. My name is Jolie Martin and I just begun my freshman year at Matsu Central. I have been a proud Raven since my family moved to Palmer in two thousand and nineteen. Thank you for giving me a few minutes to talk about my school. I love MSCS. The friendships I have formed there are not the kind of friendship, are the kind of friendships not always guaranteed to homeschool kids. Matsu Central offers me the time and space to make lasting connections that many kids take for granted. My teachers are caring, supportive, dynamic, dynamic people who have my best interests in mind. I am grateful for the time and energy they have invested in me and my family. I've gotten so much out of homeschool, but sometimes you need a little break from your siblings. At school, I have found and formed a community of others who value the students and staff at Matsu Central as much as I do. I would like to thank the Borough Assembly for all the time and effort you have put into the community. It is obvious that you care enough about us, the students, to work so diligently to provide us the space we need. I've, I have been able to attend classes at Matsu Central that I would not have gone at home. Teening and speech class would have been pretty uneventful with only my little brother and sister as an audience. I am just one of two thousand three hundred kids that benefited from Matsu Central's onsite programming last year. Giving a school that size its own space is essential. We are the biggest school in the, in the valley. The students of Matsu Central deserve a site to call their own. The building, the building we are currently in only has two classrooms, which means when we have MAPS testing, clubs have to be put on pause for the six weeks it takes to get everyone tested. Imagine the scheduling nightmare for the, for an event like Picture Day. When I heard we were getting a new building, I was very excited. I started to imagine all the things the new school could have that the current site could not offer. I imagined going to a school, meeting my friends in a cafeteria or library with big tables. I imagined each teacher having their own classroom to host clubs and classes without having to share a schedule with MAPS testing or other teachers' clubs and classes. I imagined the school grounds where I could be outside without worrying about cars driving by or trying to park. I imagined a small stage where students could perform music, speeches, and drama together. Parents and community members could share ideas, hear lectures, and enjoy all that being school stakeholders can deliver. I imagined an outside track where I could get exercise between events. I imagined science labs, art rooms, music rooms, and a library with an atrium. I know a lot of this is a dream, but it's not unrealistic. In fact, a fully funded school building project leaves all these dreams on the table. As you know, we are worth every effort you have already given us and every dollar you spend on us. Thank you for listening and thank you for choosing to fully fund the new Matsu Central building site.
Thank you. Cyanemert?
Hi, thank you. Good evening. My name is Cyanemert and I'm a parent at Matsu Central. I have two children attending there and we're just getting ready to start our ninth school year. So we've been there for quite a while and have really enjoyed our time there. My kids are actually thriving in the program there at Matsu Central. Not just academically, but as young people developing and, and learning about, more about who they are every day. So I just wanted to share some of the highlights of the program that we most enjoy as a family. The, the full music and art program, my daughter's taken piano all nine years while she's been there. Both of my kids have taken advantage of the art program. They get to explore their interests and constantly are discovering new interests all the time. My kids are constantly asking for different classes and, and, and different clubs that they can be involved in at the school. I really enjoy that my kids have a voice in how they're going to be educated. So they're fully invested in their education. The partnerships and relationships with advisors and staff members are such an important piece of our homeschooling journey. They're not only friends of ours, but they're like an extension of our family. And then, of course, the community with the other family members who are also on their homeschooling adventure is very key to our, our adventure as well. If I had one complaint, it would be the lack of space that we were experiencing in our buildings. So some of the stories I can share is, from my own personal perspective, is times I've actually homeschooled math with my son in the truck while the heat was blaring because it's winter because there was no room for us to sit in the library while my daughter was taking another class. And so those are the kinds of things that we need to have solved. Busy school days in the library are very full. There's no, no parking left. We had our fiftieth anniversary celebration today as a school. And it's amazing to me that Matsu Central School has been serving this community for fifty years, but we don't have our building of our own. We're the largest district school in the district. And so it's just getting more and more challenging every day to get everybody in the door to enjoy the classes and all of the programs that the school has to offer. I would appreciate it if the borough would do whatever they can see to do to fu-fully fund Matsu Central School's new building. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bill Bruster? Yo?
My comment is for the land use permit.
Yeah, this is just for the Matsu school.
Okay, then I'll wait for the land use permit.
All right, thank you, sir. Nathan?
Good evening. My name is Nathan Chud and I'm one of the assistant principals at Matsu Central School. Tonight I speak on behalf of our, of our advisory board, our parent advisory board, our school community, including the twenty-three hundred aforementioned K through twelve students. I would like to sincerely thank you all for your solution-oriented service to the community. We don't take it lightly. I'm a born and raised Valley kid, the son and son-in-law of a collective four retired teachers from the Matsu Borough School District. After years of living elsewhere, my wife and I decided to return to our roots here in the Palmer-Wassilla area, largely because of the opportunities such a lifestyle affords our own children. It's a similar spirit of endless possibilities that first drew me to Matsu Central School, initially as a, as a teacher, advisor, and now in my second year as part of the school leadership. We all know the world is changing and education with it. Matsu Central affords students a unique opportunity to handcraft their own approach to learning. Although, as has been mentioned, we began strictly as a correspondence program and we still serve a significant portion of traditional homeschool families. We also have a vibrant and extensive list of onsite offerings for further collaboration and direct teacher support during the school day. Tonight I'd like to particularly emphasize that our model is also unique in that students seek out learning opportunities in partnership with over three hundred local community businesses, choosing whether to spend their educational allotment funds at a gymnastics studio, a tutoring center, or a technical training facility, to name just a few. As Cyan mentioned earlier today, we hosted an open house and the halls and rooms were jam-packed with families visiting the booths of local businesses who are providing extra instructional support to our students. I spoke with the owner of a, a local art studio in Palmer who mentioned that they almost had to shut their doors during COVID, but they were able to stay in business largely due to the flow of Matsu Central families that were supporting their efforts. So here's the bottom line. Matsu Central's success also means the success of local small businesses. Core to our philosophy is the conviction that education is at its best when a student, parents, teachers, and the wider community are all partnering together for the good of the child. And as has been mentioned, apparently all these ideas create a fairly, fairly popular draw as our school has been the largest and fastest-growing in the district for years, with over four hundred new families enrolled this year alone. Unfortunately, our onsite offerings, student safety, and general program operations have been compromised due to our geographical location and the lack of viable space within it. Fiscally speaking, as Manager Brown mentioned, our current building has been wasting money for years in a long-term lease scenario, which only adds to the importance of coming up with a long-term solution. Our principal Stacy McIntosh, our parents, and our students have already testified before this assembly regarding the pressing need for a new school building. There's no reason to bore you this evening with more reasons for why. It's a common sense decision that's in the best interest of students, families, and businesses in the Matsu Borough. I appreciate your commitment to seeing a good idea become a good reality.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on this ordinance? Yes, sir, come forth.
Mike Coons, and this is, this is kind of a, kind of an unusual situation I find myself in. And I've testified to different committees in, in the legislature about spending. And I've admonished them that since I am a graduate of the Financial Peace University, Dave Ramsey, I paid off thirty-two thousand dollars in eighteen months. I got my house paid off nine years ahead of time. I'm debt-free. And it's always, you know, I'm always seeing governments spend, 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 and borrow, borrow, borrow. This, you guys, did you read Dave Ramsey's book? Did you take the Financial Peace University class? If you did, you graduated with honors. Thank you. It's, it's, it's one of those kind of rare, rare moments where I see the government actually spend our money wisely and in a way that we don't get a tax on a bond for forty years down, down the road. So I appreciate what you guys are doing. It's, it's phenomenal. Give yourself an A at the Financial Peace University.
Mike is hard to follow. My name is Father Randy Hillman. I do have parishioners throughout the, the borough, some of which was award-winning, book read, challenged things. Is this better? Thank you. Since the borough's policy shot, okay. Father Randy Hillman, Valley Anken Church here in Palmer and Wassilla, and also a church in Anchorage, but doesn't pertain to this. I do have parishioners throughout the, the borough and summon healy. But anyway, speaking to the, this is really a good thing we're doing. It allows individuals to be able to have a school that they call their own and participate instead of having, utilizing school gyms for other activities. I and my other parishioners that I spoke to, that I heard about this, they're all in favor of this, especially those individuals that's currently enrolled in Matsu Central. It's a very good, well-designed project. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak on this subject.
Okay, thank you, Father. Anyone else that would like to testify in ordinance twenty-two dash zero nine zero? We do have one person online. Okay, go ahead. Whoever's online, please go ahead and testify.
Hi, this is Julie Andal. I'm actually was waiting to testify on a, a different subject. And this is my first time testifying, so I did it wrong and I apologize.
No, no problem. Audience part, you probably want to do audience participation. That's going to come up as soon as we're finished with this topic, so. One last.
Okay, do I just sign, do I hang up and call again?
Can she just, yes, Caleb's, the IT guy is shaking his head yes, so, thanks, Julie.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Anyone else that would like to testify in ordinance twenty-two dash zero nine zero? Seeing no one else, I'm going to close the public hearing. Deputy Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry.
I moved to adopt ordinance twenty-two dash zero nine zero. And as, as the manager indicated, I would recommend that we vote this down and that we bring a appropriation bill later because we can build the school without debt. You know, I, I think that we've reached, you know, the best possible solution in, in. You know, I think that we've reached, you know, the best possible solution in negotiating and working with the school district, and we will save substantial money over, you know, a period of time. We'll save the issuance fees for actually issuing the bonds. We'll save the interest payments. The district is going to save the lease payments, and they'll give us substantially better building. And, you know, we can move forward a lot faster this way, so. I, you know, I'm glad that we were able to find a way to do this without debt, and I'd recommend we vote this bond package down.
Okay. Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to correct the record. I misspoke. As I was saying, $4 million annual debt service payment. It wasn't making sense, so I wanted to make sure it's correct for the record. That would be roughly $1.8 million annually. I just, it's important to have that thing, that correct on the record. And also to Mr. Sumner's point, I would anticipate we would have that legislation brought forward for the assembly to take action on in the September timeframe. Probably we'll take both meetings, and then it'll be up to the school board when they pass their resolution to move that money over. So we are in the process of drafting that already, but it will take a couple of meetings in September to work through that legislation with the appropriate public hearings. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Assemblyperson Hale?
Yeah, just one quick question. So we're talking about using some more of the money that the state sent over for past school bond debt reimbursement to do this instead of taking on bond. Okay, thank you.
Assemblyperson Yon?
Yeah, thanks again for all the great details by Jesse and the manager. Couple of things I'd like to touch on. I stand adamantly opposed to the idea of bonding for roads. The reason I was okay with bonding for the school, the only source of repayment on a road bond is taxpayers. But I wanted to point out that currently, we're spending $586,255 a year to lease Central. It's growing by 2.5% a year, and that lease expires soon, and if it goes to fair market, it was going to jump exponentially due to inflation. So this is a, I would have been okay bonding a little bit for this because, like I said, we would have got the return on not having to lease the building for life, right? But the idea that we can do it out of pocket, it was a lot of negotiations and a little bit of a struggle to make it happen. But we're going to do that. We're loaning a little bit of money to the school district. They're going to lease it for about five years from us, and then they never have to pay another dollar after that. So this is saving the taxpayers millions and millions and millions of dollars over the years. I'm very excited about this. I had one of my sons attend this school seven years ago. Homeschool, you're supposed to do it at home, but you have to go there to test, right? There's only two classrooms, as mentioned by one of the students. It was a nightmare. The parking lot's atrocious, and it's the largest school in the whole borough. And then the other thing I wanted to point out, business decisions are important, and as mentioned, there's 2,300 students attending here, but we actually have 2,700 students in the borough attending other homeschool programs that are not based out of the Matsu Borough. One's based out of, I believe, Galena, one out of Fairbanks, possibly one out of Anchorage. So what this is, is this is other school districts, other communities coming into our community to compete with us and to take our revenue home. I'm hopeful that with building this school, that we can get a lot of those students back into our financial, onto our books. So anyway, I think this is a great idea. I would have been okay with bonding because it would have got rid of that close to $600,000 lease that was about to go up quite a bit. But the idea that we can do it out of pocket and save the taxpayers' money for a long time is amazing. So as mentioned, I hope everybody votes this down unanimously. Thank you.
Further discussion from the assembly? Yes, assemblyperson McKee, go ahead.
This is kind of confusing because when I see this, and I hear all of the deservedly glowing comments about the school and all of that, but then on the other hand, I'm saying, okay, vote this baby down. I don't understand this dynamic. If I, when I see this, I say, well, why don't we just pull it? Why did it come up for public hearing? But then I was informed that everybody needs to give their input, so I'm hearing one thing out of one ear and one thing out of the other. Where do we go on this?
Okay. Deputy Mayor, did you?
It seems to me that he's saying, that Mr. Yont is saying that this is already taken care of in another way, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, so to be clear, this had already been noticed to the public, so the clerk, I would have just pulled it, but the clerk advised me that that would be somewhat inappropriate. So we are having the public hearing, but recommending voting it down.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Assemblyperson Yon, go ahead.
For recall the question?
If we would have had to put this on the bond, if we were going to go to the bond or go to the ballot in November, then today was the last day we could do that. We've already noticed it would be disrespectful to the public if we noticed for it. This will happen again in the future. We'll have other situations like this where we make adjustments on the fly because things have changed in the last month, right? So it would be disrespectful to everybody that came to speak if we just pulled it and they sat out there all evening and didn't know how come. So the best thing to do sometime, we, I feel like we've had a good plan prior, but we were blessed by a lot of extra money in the budget this year from the state, and because of that, we don't want to take on any debt. And so here we are asking everyone to vote it down.
Further discussion. Assemblyperson Binear, did you have a comment?
I was calling the question.
Okay. So we need to vote on the call for the question? Is there any objection to calling a question? Hearing no objection. Any objection to approving ordinance 22-090? All right, so the clerk, go ahead and vote. The clerk will tally.
Assemblymember Binear?
No.
Madam Mayor, it failed unanimously.
Okay, so that legislation has not passed. The next item on the agenda is audience participation, and we do have a signup sheet, so we will just start with the signup sheet. And Keith Boland?
Yes, like I said, Keith Boland, as before, I wanted to talk about the Dominion machines, and I just got a lot of questions that I think a lot of people even on this assembly may not be familiar with. For one, these machines were, before they were implemented in any state, including Alaska, there were two to three different states that put in a security assessment for these teams. All those security assessments failed, and they're recommended not to purchase the machines. States purchased them again anyways. We were told that the machines would never be connected to the internet. We've already learned in many court cases, any legislative bodies, that they are connected to the internet. The literature for the machines themselves coming from Dominion says they can be connected to the internet. They, I keep hearing the responsible, from local people, that, well, that's not the machines we have. It's not about the machines we have. It's about the software. Whether you have an iPhone or an Apple, if you connect to the same app, it has the same function. It's not about the parts in the machine. It's about the software. The software for Dominion saves all the data into an SQL database. Sure, you can have all the security you want on the front end of the machines. That SQL database is not secure. People can go in and modify that. It's easily accessible. They just proved that in New Mexico this last week. If you can change the database, the machine pulls from the database to give you the numbers. Doesn't matter how secure the machine is if the database is not secured. The other thing, why are we trusting a company that's filed defamation suit after defamation suit on anybody that dares to question them just to cancel the defamation suits weeks before disclosure, to file those same defamation suits in other states so they can keep the ball rolling and round the clock? The other thing, these are not tabulators. They're server machines. Tabulators count. Servers have software. Servers have functions. Dominion had built-in secondary hard drives on half the machines in half the other states that allowed them to have remote access. These machines are not supposed to be remote access to begin with. That's illegal against federal law as well as most state laws. So there are plenty of reasons to disqualify these machines from use in the state before we even get into any question of voter integrity, voter fraud, any of that. I just, I don't understand why we're using the machines when they were sold under false pretenses. The company constantly challenges people just to pull their lawsuits at the last minute to challenge them again in another state or jurisdiction. It's just, it just, it burns me up to see this. And the problem is, is, you know, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the representative body here, and we have this language issue here. People want to say leaders. Well, no, you guys are representative bodies, which is better. You were chosen by the people. Leadership is determined after you've done your job, and how well you did that job for your people. And part of a job of being good leader is to make sure that your constituents are informed, and this information is not getting out across the state. I have conversations with people every day that are unaware of any of these facts. They can be easily found. I highly recommend that anybody on any legislative body in this state, contact your peers in other states that are dealing with these same issues. Find out what they know. That's what we do in the scientific community all the time. Call your colleagues. Find out what they're dealing with with the same issues. And, you know, I'd be very surprised to find out that very many people in the state have done that at all that are representing the people. I mean, there are plenty of reasons to disqualify these machines before we even get into any shady work.
Donna?
Good evening. My name is Donna DeFusco. I want to thank assemblymembers Yont and Tu. Last week, they both came out to assess the Burma Road Underpass project. We had a chance to have a conversation about the project, RS 2477 rights of way, and an opportunity to show them the location of the Iditarod National Historic Trail and the historic Iditarod Trail built by the Alaska Road Commission, both trails located north of our property. Hopefully, they have or will share that information with the assembly and public during the appropriate time. After their visit, I started to think I need to spend a little time specifically on RS 2477 rights of way. The law specifically reads, quote, "The right of way for the construction of highways across public lands not otherwise reserved for public purposes is hereby granted," end quote. The Alaska Supreme Court opinion on Ottena versus State of Alaska DNR and DOT was written March 12, 2021. The handout today is the relevant information from that decision that pertains to the Burma Road Underpass project. Ottena was granted summary judgment in March 2021 before the Burma Road Underpass project was approved in the Matsu Borough budget process. And as we repeatedly pointed out before the project began, the Superior Court ordered that Arteris 2477 rights of way conveyed only the right to pass over the land and nothing more. It did not grant easements for recreational uses unrelated to travel between two definite points. The Alaska Supreme Court affirmed the order. Further, the Ottena Superior Court order said that RS 2477 did not and cannot now, 40 years later, after its repeal, convey the right to develop that land for recreational and commercial purposes. The Alaska Supreme Court affirmed the order. I'm not sure where the borough is getting its legal advice on RS 2477s, but it appears to be deficient. If the state is not allowed to build recreation facilities in RS 2477s, neither is the borough. The Burma Road Underpass is clearly not a highway, and it was built solely for recreational purpose. The underpass project is illegal. It violates both RS 2477 law and Alaska court orders. The Alaska Department of Law is the largest law firm in the state. We are still awaiting the results of our appeal with DNR and suspect that the state, with all those employee law degrees and support staff, is trying to figure out how to wiggle out of this mess that they have made. Ottena suffered from the actions of the state. We have greatly suffered from the actions of the borough with state encouragement. We are on the public record with hope that through education, no other landowners will be affected by misinformed, overreaching government decisions and that you can restore the damages done to our property. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Stolting? Tom? S-T-O-E-L-T-I-N-G? There, this was the only place for the audience to speak tonight on any item that's on the agenda. We've had our public hearing, and so, so if there's an item on the agenda that you want to speak to now is the time, sir. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Manager Brown and Assembly. Thank you. Most of you are new here since I testified here last time.
Your name, please, for the record.
What's that?
Your name for the rec.
Tom Stolting.
Thank you. Okay, now go ahead.
I'm here for the wastewater advisory board. I've testified, I don't know, 20 times before in front of the old assembly and everything. And my understanding now is that people thinking that the borough don't want, you know, a processing plant and receiving plant, it needs it. We're currently, right now, putting in $25 million, or 25 million gallons plus a year into Anchorage. That's a lot of gallonage, you know. The latest study shows where, if we can get into Palmer, and there's already been a study done, and they say they can handle it, that the borough would make money on it, actually. Because I imagine you guys are pretty skeptical right now with everything going on, whether or not it's a moneymaker, you know. People eat, and they got to go to the bathroom. I hear today about all the schools and everything. Everybody's worried about the schools. Well, you know, I'm the, I'm the old owner of Alpine Septic Pumping. I've sold it. It's been sold for about three years. I have nothing to gain from it, but it's time that we just get, get a septic plant going out here. You know, the refuse that's out here in the, in the valley, just imagine if they had to haul it to Anchorage. You know, I don't quite understand why we don't have one. And I'm doing it mainly for the pumpers that are coming up in, you know, in the years to come. It's basically what's happening. We're passing on the labor and the truck time going into Anchorage. You're looking at over three hours. Excuse me. And then when you get to the dump site at Turpin, if there's like two or three trucks ahead of you and three tankers, you can add another hour and a half, two hours to that round trip. So you can, you know, dump your load. So, I mean, you're paying for labor and truck time. But I mean, the study shows, the most recent study, and also the borough, or I mean, the assembly has, you know, said go ahead on several accounts over the past years, moved forward on it from, you know, going through like loans, private entities, building a plant. And the most recent one is Palmer. But I just wish somebody would, you know, step up and do a little research and, because I know that a lot of people have testified in the past. And I was just talking to Assembly Two yesterday, or a couple of days ago, and he just says, come and testify again because pretty much all of you are new here. So anyway, that's all I have to say, and thank you very much.
Thank you. John Miller?
Hi, my name is John Miller, and thank you for hearing me today, tonight. I've been an election worker for several years as a field worker. I work servicing about six of the Matsu Borough precincts every election. They all do a great service. They're efficient, and they do a thorough job of counting every ballot. They're, they do a great job. I have no problem with our elections at the precinct level. What, it's what I don't see that concerns me. What happens when our ballots enter the tabulator? What happens after it, after that? We have presented evidence to you that the voting machines are vulnerable and unreliable, easily hacked and manipulated. Tonight, we're going to present to you a simple, open, transparent, and accurate process to ensure election integrity: hand-counting ballots. Alaska has 130-plus precincts that hand-count ballots. The Election Field Workers Manual has instructions on counting, conducting a hand count, even for ranked choice voting. Hand-counting ballots at the precinct level is a tried and true method, opened and visible to all. Hand-counting ballots is the only way to verify if a machine count is accurate. Why not just hand count only? There's no need for voting machines. Not only will a hand count cut expenses, but it will restore voter turnout and confidence in our election process. Thank you.
The next person, it looks like they just put Kathy? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Harris. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Manager, Assembly Members. I am here to present. I am here to present some fun suggested hand-counting procedures. Again, over 130 precincts in Alaska currently hand-count. First, we have additional transparency: verbal counts. Then we have in-person confirmation, candidate representatives at the table, giant Post-it pads displayed for all to see, video camera recording for verification and nuisance identification. Number two: ballot box replaces the voting machine. Poll worker chairman needs to be present throughout the entire process. All voting procedures prior to election remain the same, like the setup of the voter booths. C: Questioned, spoiled, special needs ballots are handled the same as before, taken to the borough clerk. D: A lockable ballot box replaces the voting machine. The poll chairman and the borough clerk have the ballot box keys. Any opening, shutting of the ballot box to be observed at all times by the poll chairman and another election worker. Secure the box with a lock and key. F: Anytime the ballot box is opened, a log is appended, signed by two people at the same place in the camera view. Number three: Election Day hand-count process. A: Election day start, maybe 6:00 a.m., poll workers sign a document confirming that the ballot box is completely empty. A representative from each campaign may observe the confirmation of such. B: Ballot box is locked and sealed by the poll chairman. C: People fill out their ballots, yay, and ballots are placed in the locked ballot box. D: A second shift of poll workers replace the first set at 2:00 p.m. or at the close of the election, 8:00 p.m. E: Election closes, procedures remain the same. Doors are locked. Verification of the total number of ballots available versus the ballots actually used. F: Ballot box is opened and placed on the table in front of the vote counters and in view of the camera. Four: Vote hand-counting setup. A: Video observation, camera positioned for full view of the table, the ballots, the ballot box, and the tally on the giant Post-it pad. B: Counting table. Poll workers one and two and an optional representative from each campaign can be present at the counting table. If there's too many campaign reps, straws are drawn for who sits at the table and who views on a nearby TV. C: Ballot box table. Poll worker number three collects the counted ballots in stacks of 10s or 20s or 25s and returns the counted ballots back to the ballot box. And finally, D: overall tally viewable by all and recorded on the giant Post-it pad by the poll chairman. Thank you.
My name is Sally Pollan, and I'm going to continue with this procedure which we're presenting: the vote counting procedure. The ballot box is opened, a log is updated, and the ballots are placed on a separate table. The poll worker chair brings 10 or a predetermined number to poll worker number one. Poll worker number one reads the ballot serial number out loud, along with votes for each candidate and votes for each question on the ballot. Everyone at the table and on camera, including the candidate's representatives, can see and hear what was on the ballot. Poll worker number two follows the same procedure as poll worker number one and confirms the count. The ballot can also be seen by the candidate's representatives, who sits nearby at the table. Once a tally is confirmed for the group of ballots, they are given to poll worker number three and placed back in the ballot box. The chair election worker listens to the tally of the confirmation of poll worker number one and number two and writes that tally on the giant Post-it pad. And then for the final tally of votes, it's compared against the count of the signatures on the register that every voter signed. The final vote tally sheet is filled out. The chair takes a picture of the final tally sheet and sends it electronically to the borough clerk and calls the clerk to confirm its receipt. The borough clerk confirms with the poll worker chair that the electronic message of the tally sheet has been received. The ballots are locked in the lock box with the tally sheet and key, and then a seal with all poll workers' signatures on it is placed over the ballot slot. The box is then driven to the Matsu Borough building by the poll worker chair and one other poll worker. The clerk or borough representative signs off on receiving the ballot box and confirms that all items are accounted for by opening the box and logging the action in front of the chair who delivered the box. Okay, regarding absentee, questioned, early voting, challenged, and special needs ballots. The voting machine has been replaced with a lockable ballot box. Canvassing takes place as before. Vote counting is done by hand in the same manner as vote counting procedure above. An exception could be a separate room made available with a TV and a live camera feed for candidate representatives.
Okay, thank you. Brian?
Hey, John. You can hold on. Brian Endle, you're a true conservative candidate from Matsu Borough, Assembly District One. Thank you for hearing me. I want to go over this solution that we have for hand-counting one more time and point out a couple things here. So, first of all, the additional items of transparency. One, we've got a camera there that can see and hear everything. Two, we've got two candidate, or we have candidate representatives that can actually see stuff. Now, they can see the ballot. Now, in the absentee counting process that we have right now, they cannot see what's on the ballot. I've been there twice, I know this. So, we also have poll workers identified by the gray circles. The poll worker chair is the one with the star on it. And we have a big Post-it note or a whiteboard here with the tallies. So, the process begins with the pink arrow here where the ballot box is unloaded and the ballot stack is placed on Table Three. So, once that's done, then the poll worker, by the poll worker chair, the poll worker chair then takes a pre-selected number of ballots, we're saying 10 for this example, and they move that to the poll worker one. The poll worker one reads off the serial number. They read off the count like they might say, candidate one gets a vote, candidate two does not. Question number one, yes, gets a vote. Question number one, no, does not. Something like that. And they keep a tally of the total number of votes that are taking place. They pass the 10 ballots to poll worker number two. Poll worker number two does the exact same thing. They read the serial number off and everything that's on the ballot, everything is visible and able to be heard. They compare their notes on the tally, and then they write off, they put the tally on the whiteboard or whatever, and it would be like seven, three, six, and four. So, once that's done, the poll worker two then passes the ballots to poll worker three. They put them in the ballot box, and the process begins again. Another 10 ballots are selected. So, one thing with the resolution that's presented is that, I've got a little bit of time, we don't have, for the resolution that's presented, the clerk has to gather all these ballots and take them to a central location. There's no, there's a lot of vulnerabilities there for lost ballots and whatever. The visual aspect of candidate representatives seeing stuff won't be there either. That's a problem. We need to have eyes on this. That's the whole reason we're getting rid of those machines, and we're bringing eyes onto it where people can actually see it and confirm what's going on. And we thank you, and we hope that you get rid of these machines. Thanks.
I'm Robin Renee Bjork, and I would urge you, please, to get rid of the Dominion machines, even if we lose money somehow with that. It's well worth that loss of money because last night, when I went in to vote, I don't know why, I just thought, I want to see if there's any Bluetooth signal here, and I turned it on, and there was a device I hadn't recognized that connected to it, and it stayed connected the entire time I went through the line, went into the booth, went to the machine, put my ballot in. I thought, isn't that interesting? So, that kind of made me look at this a little bit further, like, does that mean anything? Maybe not. Maybe it does. But what I learned from other people that are much smarter than me about the programming is that Dominion installs all passwords for every administrator level, so that gives them full access. So, if we're not changing the passwords each time, anyone who has those passwords can remotely access the internal workings of the machine after it's installed. And in every instance where forensic analysis was done, it was found that a non-certified program, which was Microsoft SQL Database Management Tools, was installed on these machines. And this database management tool, it's illegal, first of all, and it allows a third-party, untraceable remote access to the databases used to conduct the election. What I also found out is that this database management software program operates outside of what typically would be a Democracy Suite software, and therefore, it can be remotely accessed without detection. And what I'm understanding is that typically, databases and software programs are all interconnected, so I envision it like a big spider web, so that if there's a disturbance in one little aspect of the database system, there's an imprint of that, and it can be detected. Intentionally, I think, the Dominion's software programs, the way that they designed it, they designed it that any little data point is independent of all the others, so that if they access it, they can manipulate something without any detection, and there's no disturbance, there's no footprint, if you will, for that, and nobody would be the wiser that anything happened with that. So, I think no matter what's happening with the machines, oh, here's the other thing. I found out that there's Bluetooth interconnectivity with the machines, there's USB ports, there's Wi-Fi capabilities, and then cable. So, last night at the voting booth, someone says, "Well, I checked, it's not plugged in," right? And I'm like, "Oh, wow, this is a very sophisticated, well-designed nefarious system." And because public trust is so undermined right now with walking in and seeing this, I felt like I'm feeding my ballot into some kind of monster machine, and I have no idea what's going to happen with my vote. So, I think it's worth it, no matter what. We can't trust the machines. We don't trust the machines. Let's get rid of them and go to hand count. Thank you.
Karen? Karen? Karen Lewis.
Mr. Brown, Mr. Manager, and all the Assembly, thank you for hearing us. This is about the Dominion machines.
State, your name, vote for the record.
Oh, my name's Karen Lewis. A new expert report analyzing the computer hard drive on a Dominion voting system in Mesa County, Colorado, concludes that during the 2020 general and 2021 municipal elections, quote, "A critical security failure occurred," unquote, allowing unauthorized databases to be created and populated with ballots that cannot be verified. The unauthorized activity occurred after counting of ballots in those elections had already begun, and that it was committed by unknown actors outside the office of the Mesa County Clerk and Recorder Tina Peters. The forensic audit was commissioned by Tina Peters after she had the images of the machine hard drive made in May of 2021, which was just before the Dominion voting systems, under the direction of the Secretary of State Jenna Griswold, eradicated election data from the drive in what Griswold dubbed "the trusted build," much to her dismay that the images were already taken. The trusted build permanently destroyed over 29,000 files from the hard drive, which were required to be maintained for at least two years under state and federal law. They also found that the Dominion voting machine was illegally embedded with 36 wireless devices which could enable cell phones and other external computers to access the machine and alter the election results. The audit found multiple shadow databases for adjudication and tabulation of votes were created without the knowledge of Mesa County election officials. A way to think about the added databases is like a second set of accounting books potentially used to cover illegal activity. A few weeks ago, just earlier this August, the machine tabulated recount ordered by Colorado Secretary of State Griswold failed the logic and accuracy test in spectacular fashion with over 50% error rate out of the 4,000-plus ballots tested, and the Dominion employees were there, too. In Antown County, Michigan, a forensic audit of Dominion voting system software showed that it is, quote, "intentionally and purposefully designed with inherent errors to create systematic fraud and influence elections," unquote. The allowable election error rate established by the Federal Election Commission guidelines is 1 in 250,000 ballots, or 0.0008%. They observed a rate of 68.05%. This is, come on, people. A lawsuit filed by Arizona gubernatorial candidate Carrie Lake and Arizona State Representative Mark Fincham are seeking a preliminary injunction to prevent the use of electronic voting machines in the state's upcoming elections. One more sentence. Their complaint reads, quote, "Election voting machines cannot be deemed reliably secure and do not meet the constitutional and statutory mandates to guarantee a free and fair election. The Dominion voting machines violate the rights of voters and those who are seeking office. These machines have undermined public confidence in the validity of election results." Yes? Oh, I printed out this. Madam Mayor, you may, you can give it to other people, too.
Give it to the clerk, and show this person.
This is the forensic examination and analysis from Mesa County. If anybody cares to look at it, it's got all of it.
Okay. Give it to the clerk.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Manager Brown, and Matsu Assembly Members. I told you a month ago about the history of Dominion and how they were founded in Venezuela by three people, three software engineers called Smartmatic, and that they did so well for Hugo Chavez that they got three contracts that enabled them the money to buy Sequoia. And then I also told you how they bought Diebold. And then Dominion bought them in 2010. So, these are the machines we're looking at. They were built in Venezuela in order to steal elections. Now, I gave you this last week, and I'm going to read it to you. On December 6, 2020, a Dominion Voting Systems machine that was sequestered in Ware County, Georgia, revealed weighted vote counting after a forensic audit was conducted. The shocking results showed that the machine reported 87% vote count for President Trump and 113% counted for candidate Joe Biden. Essentially, an algorithm was discovered which altered the vote trials totals for each candidate. It was discovered prior to the forensic audit that Dominion Voting System included a feature listed in their manual for weighted vote counting. This feature allows for fractional votes to be entered as the counting method for candidates. For example, you can set votes cast for candidate A to be counted as 1.25 of a vote and candidate B as 0.75 of a vote. This would shift 0.25 of the vote totals to candidate A. Dominion's official stance on why this feature is included is it's built in for their condo or land ownership customers who may want to tabulate votes based on the amount of land each participant may own. The fact remains, the future is available for anyone who uses their software, regardless of what type of election they're conducting. I'm not saying anybody here in the Matsu Borough is nefarious or would do anything. I was a canvasser for the recall election in Palmer, and they did a fantastic job canvassing for the three days of vote counts. I didn't see any instance of anything. But this machine can be hacked by people you don't know from the back door. And just two days ago, Count the Vote gave us the information that 1.8 million poll watchers' information is on a server in Wuhan, China. Your kids, where they go to school, your social security numbers, and everything. 1.8 million poll workers were probably blackmailed by China. China is in control of the Dominion software right now. For 400 million, the Dominion software was put in charge of the HSBC Bank of UK, no, excuse me, HSBC Bank of Canada. The HSBC Bank of UK, Canada, is owned by the HSBC Bank of UK. And if you go to corporate structures from the year 2000, HSBC Bank of UK is under the HSBC Bank of Hong Kong, China. It's the CCP. They are responsible for the software in the Dominion machine right now. So, even if nobody here does anything or wants to know anything, somebody... So even if nobody here does anything or wants to know anything, somebody anywhere in the world can get in and change that algorithm to whatever they want. These machines are useless.
Jackie, will you state your name?
My name is Jackie Ivy Goforth. I'm a registered Republican. I am a published author. I am a retired postal executive. Thank you.
Holly? Sheldon Lee?
Good evening. I'm Holly Sheldon Lee from Talkeetna, and a whole bunch of people in this room have been fighting against the use of these Dominion machines since 2019. Alaska is known as one of the most strategically corrupt election states in the Union, known nationally and internationally. In 2020, the U.S. Supreme Court, and Dino case, ruled that states would not delete the witness signatures off ballots. So a Superior Court judge in Anchorage named Danny Crosby overruled the U.S. Supreme Court in 2020, and our witness signatures were taken off the ballots. So that made a really big difference when... Excuse me. The end of the election on November 4th, the ballots were counted. There was for ballot measure two for ranked choice voting, there was 81,000 some that were supposedly for ranked choice voting. There was 105,000 some that were against it. Then 158,000 witnesses' illegal votes came in to circulation over the whole month time. So at the end, ballot measure two ranked choice voting, quote, "won" with 158,000 illegal counted votes by less than 1%. That's just part of it. So with the Dominion machines, we know they're hackable, we know they're programmable, and we know that they are operated and owned and sold by the Chinese Communist military. So do we really want to be using these machines, these machines that are not accurate? It's strategic, though. It's not every single race that is hit, and that is what's been seen in Alaska. So we want to go back to hand-count paper ballots, the way that the gentleman showed, the old way of actually every area in Alaska has used in vote counting, because we need accountability. The whole camera, the whole process, the whole in-person system is not unreasonable for Alaska. We don't have a lot of people. We don't have more people than we can handle. So if it takes 48 hours to do a hand-count paper ballot, it wouldn't have taken... It wouldn't be like 2020, when it took all the way to November 30th, and there's questions all the way, and then we ended up with this system. So please, get rid of the Dominion machines.
Carla McBride? Carla? You okay? Richard Stoffel?
Richard Stoffel. S-T-O-F-F-E-L. So, guess what? I don't trust voting machines, and I don't think... I don't know. I can't imagine anybody trusts them going to vote. It just scares me. I mean, yesterday, when I voted, I mean, it was knowing this. But it's really not just Dominion. Dominion is a black machine, right? Well, now they've come out with a white machine. It's... All these machines are computers. Computers are hackable, you know? They call this one open source, because everybody can look into it, and it can be made accountable. It's controllable, just like Dominion. So there's no... It just baffles me why we are using machines, computers, that all computers are hackable. And what is the reason behind this? Why would... You know, you think, I guess they don't care about our vote. But you know what? They do care about the vote. The ones that brought these machines in, they really care about our vote. They want to control our vote. That's why they brought the machines. There's no good reason. And we can, you know, use this system that is part of the system now, the old system, add a few more accountability things, very efficiently. You can vote and have the results in 12 hours in doing this with innumerable more people. They do it in France, they do it in all different countries. We used to do it here. They can do it efficiently with all kinds of different countries. And so also, you know, when you have a poll watcher, we have what we were saying, representatives from each candidate, and those people watching, they have the camera, people watching the camera, and all those things. Well, these people, they have to be able to somehow bring forth the... What they see... I see something, I'm there watching, okay? I see something that's wrong, okay? And then, there must be some definition of meaningful access, you know? Okay, I have access to watching this. You know, it's all set up, and I have access, because I've been trained, or I'm a candidate, a representative of candidate, or something like that. But I have to have some kind of a written procedure that I can follow in order to bring accountability into the system.
David? David?
Thank you. My name is David Eastman. Some information that you already have is that in our last election, we had very few people participate for the borough. That was last month's election. And there were, of the four questions that we put on the ballot and gave answers to, which applied to all borough residents in one way or another, every ballot in the borough was the same, because it involved all the different precincts. Fewer than 10% of the people in the borough voted on those questions and decide and made decisions for all the rest of us. I was one of the 10% or so that came. To be technical, there was one question that received six votes, more than 10% of the registered voters. But if you include the unregistered voters, all the questions, less than 10% of the people were making those decisions. I think the conclusion that I draw is that whoever set up the election and created the time and place and the process, and got fewer than 10% of the people in the valley to show up to that, failed. I'd like to encourage a goal for voter participation with benchmarks. But in my mind, if you call a party, and you set out 10 chairs, and you set out food for 10 people, and only one person shows up, that's on you. You set up the party, you created the time, place, and all that, you created the number of precincts, all those decisions, and it did not work, not work well. There were some things that happened in this last election yesterday, which I know the borough was not in charge of, but which also involve things that the borough is in charge of. You know, one of the things that I saw when I was standing in line in my precinct, which was using a Dominion machine, was that the machine decided to display the person in front of me's vote, and how they had voted. And the person who was manning the machine tried to, you know, talk it down, like, oh, that's just a hypothetical result. They were embarrassed, not supposed to happen. You know, if you had just had a box and put a ballot into it, that wouldn't have happened. In the last election in 2020, I received a number of complaints of people throughout my district and the valley, where people were upset because the poll workers that were manning the Dominion machine were, in their view, looking at their ballots, and they shouldn't have been. Now, if you just put a piece of paper in a box, you don't have to worry about that. I know not everyone is doing that. I know there's just a couple of people, I think, that were acting poorly and shouldn't have been doing there. I received the excuses like, well, with COVID, there's new people, and they don't know how to do things, and so forth. Whatever. If you had a box, and you put a paper ballot into it, that wouldn't have happened. So as one of the 10% of the people who showed up, I don't want you to assume that because I showed up, I trust the system, the Dominion voting machines. I think there's people who didn't show up, who probably don't. But I still showed up, and I don't trust them either. Thank you.
Tom Manos? Tom Manos? I guess maybe he's gone. Father Randy?
Father Randy Hellman, Valley Fellowship, Anclakin Church, Palmer, Wausau, and Borough. All my parishioners throughout all of your areas has been asking me and to speak to you on this subject numerous times. I'm in great deal of pain, so I'm speaking for them. Every one of them has told me in different ways that their personal secure information has been hacked and given away. I personally, as a DOJ person, as well as a VA person, has had my personal health records, financial records, and my life history given to those out there on the internet. My question to each one of you, have you had any of your personal information given away, and you had a letter from somebody saying your personal information has been given away? And that you... I'm sorry, that your personal... If that's the case, these machines, I don't care what you call the machine, is able to be hacked by some form of fashion. And that is very... One of our founding informations and founding things that we have as U.S. citizens, the right to vote in private for whomever we want. Stressing whomever we want. Some of us lose, and some of us win. But it doesn't matter. We vote for whom we want. Going back to the hand count, which we had for eons, is a workable solution. If it's not, it can be rectified at the point. But once again, if you have any of your personal information hacked, then you should get rid of any machine, I don't care what you call the machine, and go back to hand counting, which is a proven and tried methodology, with the addition of a camera that records everything and is not cut off just because they have a pipe leak. Thank you so much.
Leanna Pope?
My name is Nancy Leann Frederickson-Pope, and I thank you guys for being here this evening and allowing us to speak. I'm not going to talk about the ins and outs of Dominion machines, because you already heard an awful lot about that. And quite honestly, if anybody wanted to know about it, it's very accessible on the internet if you really want to find out about Dominion machines. They have a horrible history, incredibly horrible history, and it's appalling that they would be used here in our state. There's not a lot of confidence in our voting systems nationally as it is, and it's eroding tremendously. By having these machines, it creates a lot of stress in people's lives that want their vote to count and really firmly believe that they don't count. My father is 86 years old, and quite honestly, he's been very stressed the last couple of years, and a lot of it's from the voting situation. And what we encountered here locally in our great town of Palmer, which is really distressing to me. What happened to us was my father received two absentee or two mail-in ballots at our house. He never requested them. My brother, who is out of the country, received two. He hasn't been in the country in years. He keeps an address at my house, because he used to live there. He received two of them as well. I worked for the post office. There was countless, countless ballots thrown in the garbage that I'm sure people could have taken out. It was a mess. Locally here, we did question ballots, my father and I did. We couldn't make it in time to go to our normal precinct. So we did question ballots right here, right in this room. We finished our ballots. We brought them to the front, and we were told that if we did not want to physically seal our ballots, this year, they had a sticky that you could pull off and seal. But in 2020, they didn't. You physically licked the envelope and sealed it. They said, if you don't want to do that, you can take your sticker, "I Voted," and just stick it on there, and we will do it for you. I'm sorry, but if anybody's seen those "I Voted" stickers, everybody, they're just little stickies. And we were told in this room, both my father and I, that, oh, you don't have to physically lick that envelope. We'll do it for you. Just put the sticky on there. Of course, we didn't do that. So it shocked me. It shocked me, and it made me realize that our vote, our elections are not secure. Please, get rid of these Dominion voting machines. Let us feel like our vote really does count. We care about this country, we care about our communities, we care about our vote, and we want it to count. We want every legal vote to count once. Thank you.
Dan?
Hello, my name is Daniel Sense, and I don't have anything prepared. I just wanted to speak off the cuff. I had a friend that said if... I wanted to voice my thoughts to the Assembly that I should show up tonight. I didn't realize that they had such great expertise here. I've been studying the voting systems a long time on my own, and I have a highly unscientific, unscientific experiment that you can do that I've done. And I've just talked to people, talked to my neighbors, talked to my friends, and I've asked about their confidence in the voting system. And it goes all the way from, well, that's why I don't vote, to, well, I have my doubts. But I get a lot of, you know, we have to do something. So the confidence that we have in our voting systems in this valley is not high. I have a flight background as a flight instructor and also in the military, and they design aircraft to engineer out every flaw, any human error that you could possibly make. So they design the aircraft so if the pilot has a mind lapse, if he does something out of the ordinary, or if he just screws up in the cockpit, the aircraft is designed so that it can recover or that the pilot won't induce a problem. You are flying an aircraft. You're flying this borough. And we have to, and also, you're responsible for how this borough is built. You have to design out every possible flaw in our election system. And from what I've learned about these machines, they have flaws that are off the charts, off the charts. I didn't realize we had the expertise here about those machines. But I concur with everything, you know? I was just expecting, you know, a few people would show up, but they're ahead of me. So you're flying the borough. You got to design out every possible... You've got to design out every possible flaw of human error. And the machines is a good place to start. Thank you.[607.41][607.41](APPLAUSE)
Bill, now would be a time if you did want to come and address the Assembly.
Bill Bristler? I've addressed this body before about the land use permit and stuff, and most of you are well aware of it. I have a whole list of grievances we have that the borough absolutely has no standards, and yet they want to ask the question on these applications. You don't have a sign standard. You don't have a parking standard. You don't have a beautification standard. You don't have a drainage policy, because that's not even in your preview. That's ADEC. But they ask the question. How will people walk in my parking lot in order to get into my building? I have to draw that on a map, or it's not acceptable. Now, we, the director of that division, they did help us finish filling it out. They said they felt highest of confidence, and we still don't know if it's been accepted. We have no idea. We keep looking for an email every day. We don't know. And so part of the deal, if you're going to ask a question of how many employees I have, what right do you have to know how many employees I have? If you're going to ask me my hours of operation, that means can you adjust my hours of operations? Or do we have the right as a business owner to continue to do that as well? So they didn't ask any of the missing, the most important questions of why do you want the permit? What impact is this going to have on your neighborhood? You know, what do you want to change? Or even more importantly, I ask the question, how does any of this protect any citizen whatsoever? As I drive down the highway coming in from Big Lake back to Palmer, and you're blinded by this Fenard builder sign that's so bright, shining right on the road, yet I'm told if my lights are too bright, I'm going to have to shield them so they don't go onto neighboring properties? Well, my lights don't, but an awful lot of, all the way home from Big Lake, theirs do. So how can you even begin to ask these questions when you don't even have a standard? And I'm not even saying invoke a standard. I'm saying rein in that policy. Ask why people want the land use permit, and really, what impact are they going to have? That's the most important question, because if we are here to protect the citizens of the borough, let's start protecting and let's stop just making up bureaucratic jobs, because that's essentially what this land use permit is. It doesn't apply to everyone. It only applies to three industries, you're well aware. But at the same token, that means everyone else can jeopardize the safety of the citizens of this borough, but not us. Now, all we ask is, and I'll keep coming back, I'd like to work with Mr. Tru on this to give him my list and talk about it, so it goes to you, but we'd like to see movement. It's too late for us. You obviously know that. We're not going to have any benefit of reining this in. But it is, are we open for business in the borough, or are we not open for business in the borough? Thank you.[814.38][814.38](APPLAUSE)
So is there anyone in the audience that hasn't testified that would like to testify? Mike, haven't you testified?
No, I signed up, but I didn't get called.
Did I miss you? My apologies if I missed you.
That's okay. Okay, my name is Mike Kuntz. Since last night, when the results came out for the valley on this election yesterday, the percentages of voting is 23 to 30%, and that's for Senate seats, NO, and the House districts. That was, that results as of 4:18 PM today. Thus, this is also showing 100% of precincts reporting. Machines are supposed to automate with rapid results for each election. However, 23 to 30% only after almost 24 hours since the polls closed. France, not exactly a republic, like the US does, elections one day only and results same day. This isn't just about the controversy of Dominion machines, but transparency, rapid and accurate results. Getting rid of Dominion then costs for, to replace them with tabulators. Hand counting will be a long-term cost less. I strongly ask the ending, the end of early voting. I also strongly ask the end of poll watchers being kept on an arbitrary distance so that the poll watchers can see that each voter has proper ID. The excuse that I was given was because of the China virus. Even the CDC today, now today, admits the six-foot distancing was ineffective. Lastly, how well does the borough clean the rolls? I have a friend in Nebraska for the last three years, and he got a mail-in ballot from the state of Alaska, and he sent that back to me, and I took it to the borough, to the Division of Elections, and told him he was a registered Nebraska voter, not an Alaskan. Just yet last night, he called me, and he said that he just got a letter from Alaska's Department of Division letting him know as an advisory, that reminder that he could put in for his absentee ballot for November. This is a guy that's been in Nebraska for three years. He lived over on KGB for a number of years. He's retired Air Force. And now he's down in Nebraska for three years. So I'm not really, you know, there's a whole host of things that are going on, and I would really want to make sure that we're cleaning up our rolls, because I know that from everything I'm hearing, the Division of Elections, the state level ain't doing diddly on that. So thank you.
And Mike, you were on the list. My apologies, I skipped your name. Sorry. Mary. Chris?
My name is Chris Tyree, and my family has decided to use my address for their mail because I've lived in the same place for 30 years, and these are people that are young and go from place to place. Well, I received six forms for the people. If I wanted to cheat, I could take this right here, take it off, and give it to this man and say, "Hey, go vote for me," and tell him who to vote for. No picture, nothing saying who it is, and that's wrong. And why would I get six of them? What is wrong is the representatives making a thing in one bill, and then they sneak this in, and we don't know about it. We, like the dark money, I signed up for the dark money. I didn't sign up to do right voting, but that was snuck in there. Well, this was snuck in another bill, too. So I could take every one of these and cheat if I wanted to. And not only that, what if they went to somebody else's address, and it's our mail? And when I called and complained to one representative this morning, her aide told me the same thing that he just told you. She's been gone to Hawaii, she's been gone to Colorado, living at each state, different times. She's already informed the Elections Office that she doesn't live in Alaska anymore. They don't care. They have not taken her off yet. And not only that, too, when I called another place and I asked, "Why are they doing that?" The lady there said, "Well, Hawaii and Colorado have to tell us that she's living there in order for us to take her off the roll." And I said, "That doesn't make common sense." I said, "That's stupid." I said, "Why does the state have to..." You know, the state is becoming our mommy and daddy. This is mommy and daddy right here. And doing that to her, then another state has to tell our state that she's not on the roll anymore. That's wrong. This needs to be fixed, Mr. Eastman, because this is stupid. And, you know, it just really bothers me that, and none of these people asked to be on the voting list. None of them. And none of them vote, and one of them is autistic. And the state knows that. So why isn't that noticeable on their paperwork? Why would you send something to an autistic person?
Chris, if you could speak into the mic so we'd be sure we get it recorded.
Okay, but anyways, one of them is to an autistic person. The state knows she's autistic. You know, they should have that, they should be more organized and more efficient with their paperwork and stuff, because this is uncalled for. And I think this is a waste of money, because none of these people want their cards, because they didn't ask to be enrolled in voting. So that should have never been put into the bill. And I never knew about that. I was told it was done in 2016.[1193.24][1193.24](APPLAUSE) Well, anyways, that's why we need to get rid of these machines and all this stupidity.[1200.14][1200.14](APPLAUSE)
Come forth. Yeah. Next.
My name's Ken Hanson. Appreciate that you guys take the time to listen. I didn't realize that you guys had the influence on choosing the voting machine. There is a saying I think would be very appropriate, and that is "KISS, keep it simple stupid." And the Dominion machine is not keeping it simple. I work for General Dynamics. Even back in the 90s, just our small division, we had to hire 25 cyber, anti-cyber IT folks just to make sure that in our small division of General Dynamics, that our networks don't get hacked. And I know these guys, and they're freakazoid IT people. They just love that. The borough does not have freakazoid IT people, a whole team of them. You'd spend so much money, we spend so much money, to stop hackers. They think beyond what we think. I also ask you to consider that if Dominion was a bank, would you put your money there?[1282.58][1282.58](LAUGHTER) You know, would that be your Alaska USA? It wouldn't be. The problem with voting is, we would all have to have the ability to see our vote, and everyone sees our vote, there would be accountability. But we can't do that with voting, because we all vote in the blind. So there has to be some way to do accountability. We could do that with banking, because I look at my account statement so Alaska USA can't fudge numbers. With Dominion, you do not have that. So the hand counting right now is the kiss. It is the most efficient way to make sure that the votes are counted. And if all of you guys were Democrats and I was the one Republican, I'd welcome you guys, because you would make sure all the votes would be tal... It's actually even good to have both parties there, because we both keep each other honest. I'm not interested in swaying the vote one way or another. And with all respect, the Dominion machine and that software, even open source, which I love open source, the borough is not going to have the money to make sure that nothing's hacked. The hand voting, maybe refine it, is probably going to be the least-cost option for you guys to do this correctly. And I do appreciate your time and listening. Thanks.
Thank you.[1372.14][1372.14](APPLAUSE) Yes, Lori?
Lori Thurman from Big Lake. Thank you for being able to be here. To all, there are so many different things that are involved in this. I've been very highly involved in the portion of election integrity for quite a long time. The corruption is unbelievable, how much it is. And if you don't know that, then you just have to be blind, deaf, or willfully dumb. I mean, you are not looking. Either you're buying what the mainstream media is feeding you, and you're not getting the truth at all. You're the ones that are responsible for our votes and the process of this. You are. It's not the clerk or anyone else. You may assign that person, but you're the ones that are going to be accountable before us and also before God involving this. You have a golden, a golden opportunity to be able, across the state and also across the nation, be able to take a lead here in this process of us being able to take back our elections. It's as unbelievable, the opportunity that you have.[1446.53][1446.53](APPLAUSE)
Let him finish. Clapping's fine at the end, but don't take, use his time, okay?
Give me five minutes.[1454.53][1454.53](LAUGHTER)
No.
Okay. You can, you set the precedent here. I mean, you can do it for the whole state. All the boroughs could be able to say, "Golly, bum, you mean we have that authority and that power?" Yes, we do, and yes, you do. So please do the most admirable, the most noble, the most incredible thing of giving us back our votes, because that's what it amounts to. They're being stolen. They truly are being stolen. And give it back to us through this simple little process, as he said. I mean, he's a, I don't want to insult you, but you're probably a computer geek and everything else that's there. You're a technical person. And I was a pilot, flew all kinds of big stuff. You know, you want to have double checks. In aviation, you have at least triple checks, because some person could miss one thing, another one could catch that, and then maybe they may miss something else. You've got to have this, is what you have to have. Golly, bum, time. They've already told you here within the state, 130 of our precincts are already doing a hand count. This isn't reinventing the wheel, you know? This is not. We're already doing it. So just do it again. Give us back our votes. We've been doing this for almost 200 years. So why all of a sudden do we have to trust some little box, black box, that that's going to give us accuracy? You cannot do that. The biggest way that we can do and trust that this is true is through a hand count. You may want to squawk about your $72,000 for it. That's nothing in comparison to the money that, you're already talking about millions. Don't even talk to me about that amount of money. That's throw it in the trash. Please take your thing. Thank you for your work deed, but please take it, start back. Do not have the person of where you have any portion of a computer or dial-bot in there at all. We don't need it, because the final, the final tally, if you have a problem within the count, you always go back to a hand count. Well, then, why not go to the hand count to begin with, you know? Thank you.[1582.32][1582.32](APPLAUSE)
Hi, my name is Denise Bowlen. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but then I heard the lady with the cards in the mail, and I just thought, "I'm just going to get up there and give you a personal experience." Over two years ago, when I found out that we were going to be getting the Dominion machines, and I thought, "Why would we be doing that? In the climate that we live in and everything that's happening, why would the borough be buying these machines?" I couldn't believe it. So I actually called the state of Juneau. Then lovely lady that answers the phone answered the phone and said, "Oh, honey, don't worry. I vetted those machines myself." And I got off the phone, and I thought, "Wow, that really doesn't make me feel much better." When the lady who's answering the phone in Juneau is saying that she vetted the machines herself. Since then, I've received an absentee ballot for a son that has not lived in the state for eight years. He has called twice to tell them he does not live in the state, and I just got his new voter registration card in the mail this last week. I also got a registration card in the mail for my 18-year-old grandson, and I thought, "Wow, I'm so proud of him." I said, "Maverick, your registration card came in the mail." And he looked at me and he said, "What's that?" And I said, "Didn't you register to vote?" He's like, "I don't think so." And I said, "Well, you got a card in the mail. Let's go vote." So my question to you is, is my grandson going to go to jail? Because he's not registered to vote, but he got a card in the mail. Is he going to go to jail? Because he registered to vote, and he voted yesterday.[1686.74][1686.74](LAUGHTER) He's 18 years old. He never registered. He got one in the mail. Okay? I'm just telling you, it happened. Okay? So we're honest people. I'm going to tell you when it happened. I'm going to let you guys figure out whether you're sending my grandson to jail. If you show up at my door, though, there is a shotgun by the deal, because they're not...[1712.14][1712.14](LAUGHTER) Okay? The other thing is, when we went to vote yesterday, he has the same address as us, but where I voted and where he voted was two different places. We couldn't, I live on KGB. It was at the fire station. I know where that is. I pass it every day. Got there, couldn't get in. Orange cones everywhere, no signs. The sign to tell you where to go was after the turnoff where you were supposed to go. We get up there, and there's this one little sign on the side of the door that says, "You can vote here." I said, "It took us 45 minutes to figure out how to get in to the road behind the fire station that, after living here for 15 years, I didn't even know was there." So you have some real issues with voting and voting integrity and just voting all the way around. We have people that don't live here that are getting absentee ballots, that don't request them, that have called the state twice and said, "I don't live there anymore." And all the way to, "I dare you to show up for my grandson. I dare you." Something needs to be fixed. It's up to you guys to fix it. I'm not holding you guys responsible. I'm saying, fix it.[1779.51][1779.51](APPLAUSE)
While the next person is coming up to talk, I ask, Madam Mayor, I just want to clarify, the state legislator made a law a number of years ago. If you sign up for your PFD, they register you to vote. So I think your grandson's okay. friends, I have to bribe them with food to get them to go vote, because they don't think their vote really matters. Not because only one, you know, like the whole old thing, well, I'm just one voice. Really, like, is it even work? Does it even, we all know it's, it's a farce, and it's just a box. We're like, it's not a farce, it really is real. You can do it, and maybe it's not totally safe, but you at least still need to try, you know? And so, I mean, that's what, we want responsible kids that grow up to be adults that are involved in their community, and we want them to vote, well, then we need to give them something that is safe and reliable, that they know that they can count on and trust. So, yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
I guess all of us are saying that we don't have confidence in our votes. And I really wasn't going to speak tonight, but I don't have confidence in the machines. I'm ex-Navy. In the Navy, we used to say, right to ship, and you have the opportunity to right to ship. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Dustin Renner. I also wasn't going to speak. But, you know, if I was elected by the people to represent them, and I knew a huge percentage of the people that elected me didn't believe in something, didn't agree with it, weren't comfortable and confident in the process, I think I would want to do the right thing. And that would make, be to make sure I took an action that fixed that to the greatest possibility that I had in my power to do. I think it's clear and obvious, we're just a small percentage standing in this room. But everywhere I go, I talk to people constantly that don't trust the voting system, they don't trust the machines, they don't trust nothing that's going on right now. This is a simple solution. This plan these guys laid out is black and white, it's simple, it's easy. I don't think anybody, whether you're Democrat or Republic, would be able to argue that it's not fair. So my question is, if it doesn't change, all you need to look yourselves in the mirror and say, why? You all have the power to do this. And it's not just here. Our whole country's in trouble. Our freedoms, everything we stand for and believe in is in trouble right now. It starts at a local level with you guys, us, and all of us. This needs changed. Thanks.
My name's Kim Swanson, and I worked the election yesterday with Carla, who was on the list, thinking that she was just attendance. But yesterday, we had probably over 1,000 people that came through our precinct. We had new districts, we had new precincts, we had, we had the first day of school, new districts, new precincts, and people's voting places had changed. We had a lot of really upset people, just in that alone, never mind, you know, some of the other issues with, you know, the comments about the voting machines. So, one of the other things that I was just, if we can do it, if there's a possibility that we don't have to have our voting in the schools, there were so many people that were frustrated with, we, we've worked in the church, but there's so many people that are frustrated with that, because we're bringing lots of people in to a school situation. And I think there's just a vulnerability there, that we just need to be careful about, if we can find other places. I will say that I have worked the borough elections, and Lonnie and Pam do an awesome job comparatively to a lot of other places, and I very much appreciate everything they do. So thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else?
Members of the Assembly, the mayor, first of all, thank you for being here tonight. What a tremendous subject we're gathered here tonight to discuss. It is basically, in simple terms, the future of the republic. Because without integrity in the vote, the next thing lying ahead of our families, our children, our grandchildren, is chaos. And I don't think we have to look very far to see that. But what we have tonight here, expressed by liberty-loving people who love this republic, or they wouldn't be here tonight, is first of all, concern. And we have the opportunity to address the concerns in all due respect to them. We have also been presented with the flaws in the system. And I applaud those people who took the time out to research those flaws. And last but not least, placed before you folks is a solution. And so, tonight, we in this Assembly, in this body, are going to be able to see how you voted, and consequently, what your values are in relation to what our values are that were presented here tonight. And I finish with, long live the republic.
Sir, sir, Mr. Renner, Mr. Renner, Mr. Renner, I need your name. Mr. Renner, I need you to come back and give your name, please, for the record.
You want my name, Bill?
No, 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 we don't need that much. Just your name, please.
Oh, I did forget one thing. My name is Steve Renner. I'm in District One, Mr. Hale's district. And Mr. Yount, I sure like your shirt.
Any, anyone else that hasn't had a chance to testify that would like, yes?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me? My ears are a little bit plugged up. For the record, my name is Jim Stocker, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and Borough Assembly and staff. I'm not going to keep you in suspense. I came here tonight to talk about voting machines. Before I do that, though, I'm going to deviate for, I'm going to give about 60 seconds to something that I've always wanted to do, but I'm going to do that tonight. First and foremost, Mayor DeVries, congratulations on your new seat. You're doing an excellent job.
Thank you.
And you are, and I've, I've never, I've never seen you treat anyone unfairly. It doesn't matter who they are, you treat everyone with fairness, and I think everybody appreciates that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And secondly, I'd like to thank the borough and the Assembly, and everybody that's involved for the opportunity in making it possible to salute our flag every time we come in here, to our great republic, for which it stands. Thank you for that. And also, I'd like to thank the military people that have protected our God-given rights. We're here tonight with free speech. A lot of people can't say that around the world, but we're blessed with that. And lastly, but not definitely least, the people that are standing behind me and the people that are sitting behind me, for coming out tonight, getting out of their comfort zone. That's one of the problems that we have. People want to stay home, they don't want to get involved, they don't know what the issues are. And I believe that's one of the reasons we're losing our country, because nobody knows what the issues are, and they're asleep at the wheel. But anyway, thank you. So I wanted to address the, the issue of voting, as so many people have. I missed the last meeting, but I had the opportunity to review the audio, and I listened to all the testimony from the last meeting. And I find it interesting, tonight was pretty much a repeat, and there wasn't one person that is in favor of these machines. Going back to the time that dinosaurs were on the earth, I worked at IBM, I worked in the engineering department, and I worked with a lot of the finest engineers on earth. And if I were to bring them all here tonight, they would come up here and they would probably say exactly what everyone else says. These machines should go. I can tell you, from my own personal experiences and from being around IT people for a long time, these machines are highly vulnerable. They're, they're as highly vulnerable as the Matsui borough. And we all saw what happened at the Matsui borough a few years ago. It went down. Somebody decided that they were going to destroy the system. The Pentagon gets hacked into. Each and every one of us has been compromised. My bank's been hacked, houses are being hacked, it, it's, it's, there's, there's evil people in the world, but they're brilliant, and that's the sad part. I believe that we're going to get rid of these machines. It might be a little bit longer than we want, but we should really go back to hand-counted ballots. It works, and it's just as accurate. There's a 1% error, 1% time error in hand-counting compared to machine-counted ballots. Anyway, thank you, and appreciate you all being here.
Thank you. Yeah. Come on, come on, Laurie.
Lynn McCabe from Big Lake. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. So in, I think it was 2019, several people put together a presentation for the governor and the lieutenant governor on what's called fraction magic. The videos are still available online for you to watch. They show how the algorithm can be manipulated in the databases. And any of the election machines that are used all over the country are vulnerable to the same type of activity. So I have been paying very close attention to the election since 2020, and I am thrilled that Mike Lindell has risked his own neck, his finance, you know, his fame and fortune, to pursue the voter integrity for our country, because if we don't have free and fair elections, we have nothing. We're going down the tubes. So he has a platform which he has made available, it's LindellTV.com. They have 24-hour streaming, sometimes live, sometimes recorded programming, and there are videos available on that website that you can go and watch, that show symposiums and people who have also risked their fame and fortune. They have seen the problem so closely and intimately, computer programmers and whatnot, that they have given up their professions in order to pursue voter integrity. So this coming Saturday, there is a seminar called the Moment of Truth Seminar, which is being hosted by Mike Lindell in Springfield, Missouri. And I am very thrilled to be able to go and attend that with another gal from the Matsui Republican Women's Club, that I invited to go along with me when my husband wasn't able to go with me. And we're going to go there and see what they have to say, and bring that information back, and share it with other people, and try to encourage the groundswell of support that we need to see to get this taken care of. We can't affect the whole country, but you folks have the ability to affect our small area of the world, and I ask that you please get rid of the voting machines. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir, you want to testify? Come up.
My name is Jim Burnham. I took electronics in the Air Force. When I got out, I've been working on PLCs and computers ever since 1972. I concur with everything that's been said here, and I would just ask you to use your common sense and let AI stand for Alaska Integrity. Thank you.
Anyone, come on here.
Earl Laki with Alaska Raceway Park, Madam Mayor, you're a borough. I just wanted to, after listening to everything that's been going on tonight, I just wanted to, to take a look at the, the whole nation right now. Voter integrity is the worst it's ever been. We've got, we've got these fancy machines that do all these neat tricks, but nobody believes that the, the voting is being done properly. We in the borough have an opportunity right now, you folks sitting up there, and us tonight have the opportunity to change the image right here in, in the borough, and change the integrity of the election by doing a hand count that's, that's supervised, and the people will appreciate what's being done, and the voter integrity right here will lead the way for the rest of the country. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to testify that has, come.
My name is Bev Stocker, and I was here last month, and I remember asking you, could I just have one more minute? And you said, no, you had your turn. So I'm just going to take just a couple seconds and say what I was going to say before.
Okay, good.
Okay. So, I also do not support the Dominion machines. I already made the statement last month about the problem that we have in this valley, voter confidence. That's an issue. I think every single one of you understands that now. I didn't hear one person in support of using these Dominion machines. I don't care if you have a seven-year lease. I don't care if you have a graduated payment of 77 or more a year. Buy it out. Buy it out, and get rid of those machines, and use same-day vote, hand ballots, and you will bring back your community to voting. Because if you've lost your constituency, you've lost a heck of a lot more than the cost of those machines. Thank you very much for your time, and thank you for staying late and hearing us speak to you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, and Caleb, we have somebody online, do we? Okay. So the person online, go ahead. Go ahead.
This is Juliando, and I want to make you a something, I'm here for listening to all of us. And I am totally against any machine at all, any voting machine, because a machine is a machine, and it is programmed by people. And if they want to do corruption, they can and have the ability to do that. And also mechanical problems, it happens. I took an elderly lady to go vote a few years ago in Mothello, and I was just waiting for her to do her voting, and I was next to the lady who was manning the voting machine. And I was like, well, how you doing? And that, and she was complaining because the voting, the machine wasn't accepting the ballots. So that is one example of how many times we've heard that my ballot got stuck. I now make sure that it actually, I watch it, make sure it gets tallied by that little computer. I've been in line where, well, the voting machine is, we got a problem, everybody's waiting in line. So also, I am all in favor of cameras, even in the candidacy boardroom, because I've been in the, as witnessing for, in someone who was running, and I've seen where Assembly members that were running also get close to the candidacy board, whereas the rest of us had to sit back behind the line, where this Assembly member got to, got to go near. And we shouldn't have to address the clerk with that problem. That should be unacceptable. And so I am all for cameras everywhere when it comes to voting. I appreciate you all listening, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Is that the only person we had online? Okay. Already one last time for anyone that's in the audience that hasn't had a chance that would like to testify. And again, it can be on any subject that you want to bring to the attention of the Assembly. Seen and hearing done, and I will close audience participation. And Assembly, you ready for a break, or should we plow through?
I heard a break.
Break?
I heard a break.
Okay.
Break, break.
Okay. So let's come back at nine o'clock, then. Thank you. Thank you. Call the Assembly back to their seats, please. And then either the people that are in the assembly chambers are welcome to stay. But if you are going to converse, we ask you to go to the hallway, please. Okay. So we are at the consent agenda. And does the Assembly have anything else to pull? Yes. Assembly person?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to pull RS 22071.
Okay. Is there anything else that anyone would like to pull? Okay. So Madam Clerk, then would you read what we have left of the consent agenda?
I will. Resolution 22070, resolution authorizing the submittal of a grant application to the Alaska State Office of History and Archaeology on behalf of the Alaska State Fair in Palmer to rehabilitate two buildings listed on the, in the National Register of Historic Places as part of the Reba Chek historic farmland, farmstead, excuse me. AM 22103, destruction of the ballots from the July 12, 2022 special borough election. AM 22106, approval of contract amendment to contract 22026B with Viclin Construction to extend the completion date for Wasilla Creek headwaters trail improvements. AM 22109, authorizing the conversion of one full-time surveyor's position to one full-time civil engineer position.
Deputy Mayor?
I move to approve the consent agenda as read into the record by the clerk.
Is there any objection to that approval? Okay. Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. And Madam Clerk?
Resolution 22069, a resolution.
I don't know if that's a promotion or demotion, lady.
Authorizing the submittal of a grant application to the Alaska State Office. Did I read that one into the record earlier? Sorry.
No, you didn't. Uh-uh.
Archaeology to support base to the Borough Historic Preservation Plan update. This was pulled by Assemblymember Sumner.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
I move to adopt Resolution 22-069.
Okay. Would you like to speak to it, sir?
Yeah. So we've had the same historic preservation plan, I think, since 1987. And I see here that we just approved a grant application essentially under, well, for historic sites. So clearly, we can apply for grants and whatnot. So I don't really see a reason for us to even pursue updating our historic preservation plan. Clearly, it's worked for the last 35 years. It's about historic things, which are old. I don't think, they don't change very much. I mean, I don't know how fast new things get old. But, but the other thing was, my point before, and we did approve the modifications to the Historic Preservation Committee in my comment then was, well, it's not, it's not really the committee that could be potentially problematic. It would be the historic preservation plan and the things that could be in it. You know, because a lot of our code references these plans, comprehensive plans and that sort of thing. And, and the resolution, at least I, or the, you know, the resolution I saw from the Historic Preservation Commission was, to me, very troubling and not really a road I'd like to go down. So I guess if it's not broken, don't fix it.
Further discussion? Assembly person hours, go ahead.
Oh, it looked like Assemblywoman McKee maybe had something. But I guess I just looked at this and, and nothing jumped out at me. It was simply wanting to, I mean, history may not change, but we're constantly evaluating it and adding sites and to it. I, I don't have any reason to think that them asking for a grant and updating that plan is, you know, if there's some negative implication of what they find, I think we could deal with it at that point. But to, to cut them off, I, you know, I, this wasn't on my radar to put a lot of thought into it. I guess I would just appreciate hearing from staff or, or somebody who could tell us a little bit about, more detail about what this update is looking at.
Okay. Assemblyperson, yon?
I had a couple of questions for staff. So what?
Okay.
I'll just wait until they talk and then I'll see if, maybe don't answer them.
Assemblyperson here, did you have a comment before we hear from staff?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I mean, it's good to have, it's good to have a sort of preservation plan. It's good to update your plans from time to time. I don't really see a problem with this since, you know, this body ultimately has the final say on what is in that historical preservation plan. And so if the, if the committee comes up with something and they pass it along to us and we see something in it that we don't like, we can always strike it, change it, do whatever we want with it because we are the ultimate authority. So I don't see any problems with, with getting grant money to help them pay for the, pay for the update. That way, borough taxpayers aren't entirely on the hook for the cost.
Okay. So we're ready for staff, I guess?
Thank you. This is Adam Bradway in the Borough Planning Department. And so we, we are working on writing this application. And so what's before you is essentially your approval to go after grant money. The purpose, and we've, I'd also said that we've completed about half of updating this plan already. So it's, it's been in the works. And, and the, one of the largest reasons is that in, I think, 2015, we, before that, we had a full-time cultural resource staff person at the burrow. That position no longer exists. And so it's now on, on the Planning Department and the Planning Division to staff the Historic Preservation Commission and deal with everything that comes in related to historic preservation. And so it would be really helpful for us to have some updated guidelines and guidance on, on how the Borough Assembly, the community, the historic preservation community, and the borough's historic preservation commission want to, to deal. And so it would be really helpful for us to have some updated guidelines and guidance on how the Borough Assembly, the community, the Historic Preservation Community, and the Borough's Historic Preservation Commission want to deal with historic preservation in the borough going forward. So that's the intention, is to update this plan to help give us some guidance and steps in the absence of having a full-time staff person. It would make our jobs a little bit more efficient. Also, the 1987 plan is an odd plan. I actually have it with me. It's really hard to read. It doesn't have anything really about history. It's sort of an action plan of here are steps that you need to do to survey all the historic resources in the borough. So it'd be helpful to have something a little bit more, a little bit more readable. So those are the intentions, and I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Okay, Assemblyperson Yon, you did have some questions, so if you need a minute, that's fine.
Nope, thank you. Couple of quick questions. So it sounds like we're about halfway done updating it now. Do we have an estimate on how many man-hours we've put into that, or how many you think we have left to dedicate until we're completed?
I'm not entirely prepared to give an exact answer on man-hours. So the intention.
Maybe Alex could. I mean, just an idea, ballpark.
Well, so I will say that the intention for going after this grant is we want to spend as little borough staff time as possible on this preservation plan update. So the intention would be to hire a contractor to do probably 90% of the work of finishing this update process with the grant money.
Thank you. So you kind of answered my next question I was going to ask is, do we plan to pause the project until we potentially receive the grant? And it sounds like we do, so. Or are we going to continue to dedicate staff time even?
So we do have money in a project account right now that was allocated in the last budget to go towards this. I mean, if the Assembly doesn't pass this resolution and we don't get the grant money to leverage it, then it'll be, you know, less money to put towards a contractor, and so we might reevaluate. But that's not my decision. That's up to Alex and Kim.
Thank you.
Further questions of staff or Assemblyperson hours, go ahead.
Really a question of staff so much, but I do remember when Fran Seegerwoss, I think, was the cultural person was here. And I just, like, one thing I know that she looked at and other people has is the colony history, you know, just that portion. And we've got these colonist barns that are out there. And I just think when you, you know, if you have ability to preserve some of that history, because a lot of those barns are gone, you can, you know, you'll see, you'll see an occasion when they're just iconic. And I think historic preservation is worth having, and it sounds like we've got kind of an out-of-date plan. And it sounds like that anything that comes forward is still going to come forward for Assembly review. So if there's something of particular concern in terms of affecting how we develop the borough, that's something we could look at at that point. So this just sounds like we'd probably be leveraging some funds that aren't the borough and probably leveraging a lot of local talent in terms of helping with the historic plan, I would suspect. So it just seems like an overall good deal.
Assemblyperson McKee?
Actually, I've just gotten my questions answered. I'm pretty much in agreement with what Stephanie just said. And also, you kind of handed the ball off to Alex, and he kind of handed it back to you. So Alex, what's the bottom line here on that?
So the plan that was developed in 1987, it has like four main goals, which is to identify, evaluate, register, and then protect our cultural resources. So the remains that are left behind in the past. It is a really outdated document. I think it was actually typed with a typewriter. It's that old. And we've, we have a lot of new tools available to us that were not available before. In a lot of ways, the plan is less relevant than it was and really could use an update. I think the primary, the bulk of staff's time is working with the board and working on the plan with the board too, which meets how often? Quarterly. But they also assign a few projects. But the bottom line is, I think, if we, if we value our history and the things that have been left behind from the people who were here before, this is a good move.
Further discussion by the Assembly? Yes, Deputy Mayor?
As a counterpoint, we could vote this down and then also take the money out of the project account and reappropriate it. So, I mean, that would be my preference, and we may not all be here when this thing comes back around, so.
Okay, further discussion by the Assembly? Okay, the motion before you is to adopt RS 22-069. Is there objection? Okay, we have objection. Ready, we have Madam Clerk?
Go ahead and vote. Assemblymember Bernier?
No.
It passes with Assemblymember Bernier, Sumner, and two opposed.
All righty, the next, okay, go ahead.
Resolution 22071, a resolution directing staff to discontinue efforts toward septicage treatment facility project and to disband the wastewater and septicage advisory board. This was pulled by Assemblymember Hale.
Assemblyperson Hale, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt RS 22-071. And with apologies to the manager, I was at my day job when we had that meeting, what, about four weeks ago, I think, or two weeks ago? And I looked over the packet that was handed out. But, so we're, just kind of refresh, just a brief refresher would be appreciated.
Go ahead, sir.
To the mayor, to the Assembly. So when we had the septicage discussion, we talked about the feasibility study that was conducted to look at the City of Palmer's wastewater and treatment plant to determine if it could in the future accept septicage from borough haulers. The feasibility study did find that they felt that that was possible. I think our recommendation at the time was to go ahead and advance to a preliminary engineering report, which would provide more detail specifically around volumes, cost, more technical information. At the conclusion of the feasibility study, we did not get a hard agreement from the City of Palmer that they would be willing to partner on that venture. So we had a discussion with the Assembly, and I think the general sentiment was, we're good with the feasibility study because we can continue to haul septicage into AWU. And they have indicated that they'll continue to accept that. We have a viable fallback plan into place. There's no need to move forward with additional work to further define what we might do for septicage should those conditions change.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion or questions from the Assembly? The motion before you is to approve RS 22-071. Is there objection? Assemblyperson Hale, okay.
If I can get the members to go ahead and vote. Okay, I'm resetting it. If I can get the members to go ahead and vote. Assemblymember two, can I get you to vote again, please? Assemblymember Bernier?
Yes.
It passed with Assemblymember Hale opposed.
Ready?
We are at introductions, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Introduction for public hearing on September 6 is ordinance 22091, ordinance 22092, and resolution 22072.
Okay, Deputy Mayor?
I move to introduce the legislation as read into the record by the clerk and set the public hearings for September 6, 2022.
Discussion? Any objection? Okay, seeing none, then the legislation is introduced. There is no vacancy report. Is there any other new business? Seeing none, there's no referrals, right? Okay, and we do not have any reconsiderations, so we don't have any executive sessions requested, right? Okay, so we'll start with Mayor, Assembly, and Staff comments. Deputy Mayor, do you have comments, sir? We'll start down there with you. Okay, Assemblyperson hours?
I just want to say how wonderful it was to go out and tour the Houston site and see that coming together and see what a cool place the kids are going to have there. So kind of silver lining out of a horrible event with the earthquake. Just on the septicage, I think, you know, we have decided to set this aside for the moment, but I think there's been a lot of hard work and good information that has been compiled over the years by staff and research that is, it was useful in helping me come to decision, I think could be useful in the future. And I just wanted to recognize that history and work that went into it. And then the fair starts this week, so that means the sun's going to come out, because we're due.
Assemblyperson Yon, comments?
Next Wednesday at 6:00 PM at Station 62. I'm really excited about this, but the Matsu School District and the Fire Department here are teaming up and creating a new program that, the first time I ever met Ken Barkley, we sat down and I asked him what the biggest issue is or the biggest, you know, thing that they battle with. And he said it was employment issues. And I said, well, why don't you try to get into the schools? And they had a program decades ago, but it was just a short thing in the summer, and they didn't have any luck with it. And I said, well, yeah, it's summer. Who wants to do anything in the summer here other than have fun, especially kids? So it was a lot of hard work, but we've created a two-year program. You have to be a junior to start. And when you get done, even if you graduate the program in high school, you can't test until you're 18. Some kids don't turn 18 before graduation. But long story short, if they complete the program, pass the test, they are certified at a national level and can seek a job in the, you know, low to mid twenties an hour right out of high school. It's pretty cool. I'm super excited about it. I hope that as the years go by, it helps our fire department, I guess, bridge their gap on their labor shortage. So the average, I didn't know this, but the average volunteer firefighter right now in the Matsu Borough is like 46 or eight years old. And I'm 42, and I don't want to fight no fires. I'm too old for that stuff. So I can't even imagine, you know? And so it's a major problem. They've got, you know, hopefully, we can fix it as time goes by. I think there's 26 boys and girls incoming juniors starting the program. They started yesterday. And so if anybody wants to go to Station 62 next week, I'm pretty excited about it, so.
Assemblyperson Bernier on the phone, do you have comments, sir?
Everybody have a good week. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, comments?
Just wanted to apologize to the state legislature. It has been brought to my attention, I was completely wrong on the voter rolls being tied to the PFD, and it was an initiative. So I have been corrected. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Yeah, I'll be brief, Madam Mayor. Just for clarification on the resolution regarding the wastewater septicage and advisory board, I found out today that actually has to be dissolved by ordinance. So you will see an ordinance coming forward to do that and remove it from code. So my apologies, if we'd picked up on that, we would have had the legislation lined up, but we will get that moving. And lastly, we will get to work on the Matsu Central legislation and some of these appropriations for Assembly consideration tied to this school bond debt reimbursement, particularly with the $13.2 million we need to round out the roads package so that we can fully realize the $30 million state grant provided in this recent session. So you'll be seeing in September appropriations come forward. We'll try to consolidate it, not piecemeal it to the degree possible, but we will also need to wait for a school board resolution likely from the, from the board around Matsu Central. But we will get cooking on that and have that starting to come forward and hopefully concluded by early October at the latest.
Assemblyperson Hale, comments?
See you at the fair.
Okay, Assemblyperson two, no. Assemblyperson McKee, comments?
Yeah, I had a question, and it had to do with introductions, and it's 22092. And when I looked at the, when I looked at the, this, it said 12 million, but when I looked at the fiscal note, it said 1,200,000, and I thought perhaps we cleared that up before we. Did I make a mistake or did they? Because if you look at the fiscal note, it says 1,200,000, the commas are in the wrong place. Maybe not. Well, I don't know. I'm just looking at two things. I don't know about this stuff, so this says 12 million.
I would defer to the expert.
Oh, okay, Nick just clarified for me.
Thank you, Nick.
Goodbye.
Thank you kindly. I think, whoa, that's a bit of a difference there. Thank you very much.
No comment.
Okay, Mr. Attorney?
No comments, thank you.
Okay, so without any objection, we will adjourn at 9:25. Thank you.